Ladies and gentlemen, there's not too many of us here, but welcome to our work session. It's September the 5th, 2018, and it's five minutes after, we'll say five minutes after five. It's a little bit different than that, but five minutes after five. So we'll go ahead on the work session. It's ranked choice voting. And Doug, would you like to introduce our...
Yes. So ranked choice balloting is, our representative Mark Roberts over here, it was something that he and some colleagues pushed through as an option for cities to have the option to do ranked choice voting, balloting, and so we're looking at it to see if it's a good option or not. This gentleman here, for all of you in TV land and the three of you out in the crowd, this is Stan Lockhart, he's former chairman of the Republican Party, served in the House, correct?
My wife.
Your wife served in the House, you didn't serve in the House. I thought you both served at 1.10. Okay. His wife was Becky Lockhart. And they've both been in a great amount of time for the state of Utah, and we appreciate their service. And so they're going to present this option to us as city council, is a possible voting system. I think it's rather intriguing personally. So we'd love to hear some feedback from those of you who are here and anybody out in TV land, we'd like your feedback as well.
Which one's gonna be lead? Mark, are you the lead?
Turn the dial over to us now, because we're not gonna get it back.
Well, then do all you can.
All right. Okay, well, thanks for having us here, and it's a good chance for me to come in and see the council, meet the council as well, and give you an idea of something I've been working on as your representative for a while. This is an issue that I've been passionate about probably since my first session, well before that, in my first session, something I've been trying to figure out how to implement one way or the other. This bill, this legislation has gone through a number of different iterations and drafts and whatnot, until we were finally able to get something passed this last session. I'll go into that in a little more detail on what it does, how it works, but this, at the end of the day, is a pilot program for municipalities. Tried hard to get it implemented at the state level. Had some pushback from different areas, you know, clerks and different things, for different reasons, concerns, and so we set up, okay, let's narrow it down, let's test it, let's try it out with the cities, and if we can get good data, we can bring back the good data, and we can show that it works, and then maybe we can get it to different levels of government and elections. So right now, everything we're talking about ranked choice voting only applies to nonpartisan municipal elections. It's not required, it's an option. And so our job is to, we got the bill passed, and now we need to go recruit cities to try it out for us, so that we can get the data in the first place, to come back to my colleagues and really go back to the clerks across the state and say, hey, look, voters aren't as dumb as you think they are, as you keep telling us they are, they get this, they understand it, they like it, so let's implement it. At least that's my hope, right? Out of all this. So let's implement it in other areas of the state. So it was HB 35. This is the name of it. We come up with big long names sometimes.
Seems like you needed Aaron Burr on that ballot over there.
I already talked about this a little bit, creates a pilot program, it starts January 1st, establishes an opt-in process, so you can opt into it. If you want to do it, you have to notify the Lieutenant Governor's Office by January 1st, 2019. So if you want to do it for the next cycle, which would be next November, you have to tell the Lieutenant Governor's Office by January 1 of that year.
That'd be something done in December. The rest of the year.
Yeah, a decision, yeah, and then tell the Lieutenant Governor's Office. And then it sunsets in 2026. So hopefully by 2026, we can get enough cities and enough data, you know, to try this out, and we don't have to sunset it, and we can...
So if we try it and absolutely hate it, we can pull out in 2020?
Oh, you can pull out the next year.
Yeah.
It's a year-by-year thing.
That's exactly right.
Well, it doesn't start till next year.
Well, I know, but in January of each year, you indicate to the state whether or not you want to do it.
Okay. Yeah.
Fine, just clarifying.
That's good.
Someone just fall under those clerk category.
Good question. It's bipartisan bill, overwhelming support in the House and Senate, in both chambers. These are some stats and numbers. We'll share this slide presentation with you guys, so you can have it if you're interested in this, but it's passed overwhelmingly. The two no votes in the House were Representative Gibson, who I'm sure you guys have a great relationship with after last session, but he voted no because he, what was he doing? He was goofing around with another representative or something.
He was probably working on an SESD bill.
Yeah, I think, he was, well, I know for a fact, he walked into the chamber, right, and I'm sure he's out in a meeting somewhere.
The other two no votes.
Oh, yeah, that's right, the other two votes, they didn't think it went far enough, so they voted no because they didn't think it went far enough. We get some of those votes sometimes. That's right, thanks, Stan. All right, benefits to ranked choice voting, feel free to pipe in here anywhere, Stan. Benefits for me, so why did I run this in the first place, right? Why do I like this? Sometimes I get frustrated with, especially in situations where you have plurality, right? We have a representative form of government supposedly. You can get situations where if you have more than one person on the ballot, let's say you have three or four, well, somebody could win with four people on the ballot with 25% of the vote. My aunt actually just won the county commissioner's spot in Davis County, and, love my aunt, she's great, she only got 43% of the vote. There's three people on the ballot, you know, with the whole signature thing and whatnot, three people on the ballot, all the votes got split, she got the most votes, but she didn't get, you know, a majority, right? And for me, that's always been somewhat of an issue, you know, if we want to get a representative form of government, I think we should try as best we can to get as close to a majority or better as possible. Secondly, it changes campaigning completely, and it changes how voters vote completely. If you think about the last presidential election, especially here in Utah, everybody was torn between, all right, this Trump guy, you got Hillary out there, then you've got McMullin, you know, and then Gary Johnson and different things, and who do you vote for? Maybe you didn't really like Trump, but you were nervous to vote for Evan McMullin because you felt like if you vote for Evan McMullin, then that's really just a vote for Hillary, right? And so voters go through this in their head, and so instead of voting for somebody, the person they want, you end up voting against somebody, and you make the decision that way, and you say, all right, I gotta vote for Trump, you know, I'm gonna plug my nose, or maybe didn't plug your nose or whatever, but you plug your nose, you vote for Trump because you can't have Hillary, right? That's your bottom line. But maybe you would have really preferred somebody else, whether that's Gary Johnson or Evan McMullin or something like that. With ranked choice voting, it gives you that ability, you can rank your preferences. You say, look, I prefer this person, you can vote your conscience, I prefer this person, if I can't get this person, then I want this person, then this person, and this person, you rank them. And I'll go into the details further on this slide of how those rankings get tallied at the end of the day, and how that works, how your vote carries through to the end, even if you don't get your first choice, your voice still counts with your second choice. Changes campaigning, because now, if I'm out there campaigning, and all of you guys can relate to this, I can't, you know, be a hard line just to my base, I've got to appeal to a broader demographic and constituent of people, because if I'm not their first choice, then hopefully I can be their second choice. And so I can't go attack, if I'm running against Stan and the other people, I can't go attack Stan, you know, quite like you can when it's just, you know, nowadays, that we see all the time, because if I'm out there doing that, you know, that voters become disenfranchised with that, they don't like it. Secondly, there's a potential cost savings with this that we're working on, especially for municipalities, and at the state level, you don't have to do runoff elections, so we're dealing with this right now at the state level with the count my vote issue and the , it has to be 54 issues if you've been following that at all. You can have multiple people on the primary ballot, you know, my aunt's race is a perfect example, there's three of them. So there's been multiple bills up in the legislature trying to figure out how do we handle this? If there's more than two people on there, do we come back and have a runoff? If nobody gets 50% or more, do we come back three weeks later and have a runoff? How do we handle it? There's issues with all that. There's less people that show up at runoffs, you know, three weeks later, and then we're talking the middle of the summer as well, and everybody's on vacation, so, and it costs a lot of money to now, you know, do it again and, you know, bring out all the voting equipment and do the whole thing. So you can save a lot of money, you can eliminate primaries, especially on the municipality level, you can eliminate the primary altogether, you go straight to the general, because you don't, you're just ranking them, you don't need to narrow things down. And we had a situation in Provo last year with the mayor, they had a number of people on the primary, and the votes got split like crazy, and Cuffusi and Everett came out on top. The third guy was upset because he felt like all the votes got split away from him, so he ended up filing as a riot in for the Provo mayor position. So then you had three people running for Provo mayor, and Cuffusi won, and she didn't get 50%. And so there's a number of city council members and people in Provo that are really interested in this as well, because they experienced it firsthand last time.
Can it get a little bit convoluted? I mean, if you have five or six different people running for the same, you know, which you, you're saying that there wouldn't be any runoffs of primaries, well, that would be, you know, five or six people, you could get a lot of different scenarios there, you know, with first, second, third, fourth, fifth choice, but...
Yeah, and there's really not a whole lot of scenarios, it's, you just look at them and you rank, who would you want, right?
Well, yeah.
Who would you prefer?
But you times that by a whole bunch of different people, and you still get a clear winner, is what I'm saying.
You still get a clear winner, and I'll show you the stats on how it works and how you figure that out, but ranked choice voting is basically taking multiple rounds, right? Runoff voting, and doing it all at the same time. So instead of having to come back and vote again, drop off, come back and vote again, you do it all at the same time, and the software figures it out.
So mayor, what we actually find is that you get greater voter engagement, because voters now have a reason to go figure out who their fourth and fifth choice are. So they're much more likely to go out and look at websites and to look at campaign literature than they under the current system. There have been many times, even in my voting patterns, where I'll know a friend of a friend, and that's my candidate because I trust my friend, but now you want to figure out who's my number one and who's my number two, and so on, and so you're forced to get more engaged. The founders of our country basically said, look, the only way our representative republic can work is if citizens stay engaged in the process, and this gets more citizen engagement, so that's why it's good. Your point's well taken, they've got to do a little more work, but we find that in this digital generation that are so used to going online for everything that they do, it's a piece of cake now to go online and say, who are these candidates, and what do they stand for, and what do they believe in, and who do I want in my preference? So this idea of a more engaged voter is really important. The second one that Mark brought up that I think is equally as important is this idea of some more civil campaigns. We've reached a point in our country where we're polarized, and no one's coming together anymore, and this literally forces candidates to stop being mean to each other, because if I'm mean to this candidate, I can't get their supporters' number two votes. And so you find elections are more focused on campaign issues and what's the future of the city than under the current system. So those are the two things that I like the very most about ranked choice voting. There are these other things as well, the cost savings, you're gonna save money and not having to have a primary, but you're gonna incur a few extra costs in terms of ballot design and how those ballots are counted. The elections equipment can do it, our county clerk supports it, both our current one and the incoming one, both, if they were here tonight, they would encourage you to try it out, because they see the benefits of ranked choice voting as well.
Can I just say something along those lines, too? So, you know, single positions like mayor, representative, things like that, we only have one person running, it's a little different, but from my experience having run for city council, and you've got three spots open and there's 12 candidates, there's a lot of people, you know, and I know some of my family did this as well, but there's a lot of people that say, well, I'm not gonna vote for anyone else, because I'm also giving them votes that could knock me out, you know, and so I've got three votes that I can cast, but I'm only gonna cast one for me, or, you know, our family members would do that, for example, and I know a lot of people who ran that did that, and I guess there's nothing wrong with that per se, but that was really hard for me, like, to me, I want to run with the, I want the best people there, and to not vote for someone out of fear of losing is problematic, I think. And so with ranked balloting, there's no problem with saying, here's my first, and my second, and my third, and my fourth, and I only like four, I'm not gonna vote for, I mean, you can stop wherever you want, too, like, if you really think that there's only four that would do a good job, you can stop at four, right? There's 12, you know? But I like the idea of building coalitions and working with people and being more engaged and less negative in your campaign.
That's a great example. All right, here's just an example of what the ballot could look like. Can you see this all right? So you basically have the candidates, and then you just fill in the bubble for a second, third, fourth, fifth, sixth, choice, there's a number of ways you can design it, this is just one example. And then you have instructions on the top, you know, for the voter, explaining how to do it. This is basically a quick explanation of how it works, but I'm gonna show a video that explains it a little better. We have equipment that's ready, the state's using ESNS, Utah County uses Dominion, and they're gonna stick with Dominion.
But they work with either system.
Yeah, and it works with the system, we've been talking with them, and they've done it, they've actually done live elections with the equipment. Complements, the vote by mail, I think, we get a lot of questions about this, how it works with the vote by mail, but we feel it's complimentary to that. Eliminates primaries, I've kind of talked about all this stuff already, all flanged into these videos to work.
Were you setting that up? Just a question, so if somebody in this scenario does first, and then they accidentally list like two people a second, is their ballot spoiled?
If they list the same person...
No, so they vote for somebody first, and then they go through the whole list, and they vote for this person second, and then third, and fifth, and sixth, and then they forget and vote someone else second again, so their ballot has two second-place votes, they just...
Two different people?
Yeah. So what happens with a ballot like that?
Not sure exactly, to be honest with you.
Like, does it just count the first one, and then it stops after that, because you have two second-place votes?
We hope so.
Okay.
I don't think we wrote that, like, specifically in the legislation.
Probably shouldn't have, probably, if we just...
Well, I guess the computer should pull it up and say, whoa, timeout, you've got...
Yeah, these are valid in ballot.
Oh, yeah? Yeah, you would know.
As they look across the country at rates of spoiled ballots, there's no greater percentage of spoiled ballots under this system as there are in our current system.
Okay. So there's people doing it right now, at a municipal or higher level? Okay. Eleven cities.
And Maine ran their primaries this way, right? Just by the...
Maine did a citizen initiative that passed that now scopes out some very specific races that they have ranked choice voting in because they want it so much.
All right.
Three, four more candidates reach out. It's called ranked choice voting. Here's an example of how it works. All of the candidates will be listed on the ballot in three columns. Make your first choice vote in column one by filling in the oval of the candidate you'd most like to win. Vote for your second choice in column two.
Sorry, real quick, this is Minneapolis, they do this, they've been doing this for a long time, this is a video they put out.
And make your third choice in column three. That's all there is to it. Now let's see how the votes are counted. Let's say there are four candidates running for mayor, Asha, Zach, Omar, and Lucy. Once the polls close, we count all the first-choice votes first. To be elected mayor, a candidate needs more than half the votes. In this example, Asha has more than half of the votes, so she's declared the winner. However, if no candidate gets more than half the votes, we start eliminating candidates and counting the next choices of those who voted. In this example, Zach is the candidate with the smallest number of first-choice votes, so he is cut. We use the second-choice votes on Zach's ballots and count those voters' second choices instead. If one of the remaining candidates now has more than half of the total votes, that candidate is declared the winner. If not, the next lowest candidate, Lucy, is eliminated. Her votes are now counted for the next choice on the ballot. Some of Lucy's votes went to Zach, who's already eliminated, so those new votes for Zach instead count for those voters' third-choice candidate. We are now down to two candidates, and Omar clearly has more than half of the votes. That makes him the winner. That's how ranked choice voting works. For more information on ranked choice voting, visit our website.
Another question for you, because you, everybody, everything's coming to 50%. If you have three candidates or three openings, you're gonna get 50%, so how's it gonna work?
Well, except if you have three openings, you have three votes.
Right, but it's still not gonna...
No, it works with multiple winner ballots, much the same way that it does with single one, but again, you're looking, in the first round, you're looking for who has over 50%. So if you have two candidates, let's say, out of 10, who have over 50% on the first ballot, they automatically come through and they improve, and then you start eliminating the last, and you reshuffle until someone else gets 50%.
And you eliminate those two, so you start looking...
So do you, so do you fill in three first-choice votes, three third-choice, second-choice, so you actually have three in every column?
No, no, you just rank them all, rank them all, one, two, and three are your three.
Oh, so you might not get 50% then, because right now, if you have three city council openings, everybody gets three votes.
Right.
So you could get 50%, but if you've got... Well, I guess you get as many votes as you want, they could vote for all 12, so you rank them.
You rank everybody, and if your first person gets 50, right, you're still in the running with that person drops off, right? So if your first person got 50%,
They're in.
They're in.
And then you go to your number two.
Then you go tabulate everything, and when you get to your ballot, they're gonna look at your second choice and count that one.
So if 50% of the people that voted for Omar on the first round, the second round around, those 50% of those people, you count their second column vote, everybody else you count their first column votes?
Right.
Until you hit 50%, and then, so you just... Oh, that's not easy.
Because they count...
But I, you guys understand...
You've got a computer system, and then the voter...
You know, just to make sure that the voters understand, you rank them, and then, yeah...
It's a little hard to explain with the multi-seat situations, but the concept is the same, you count them all, you find the person that's 50, and you drop off the lowest. With multi-winner, you not only drop off the lowest, but you drop off the person who's already been declared a candidate, right? You don't count that one anymore. So then you go to number two.
You drop off the lowest, but then wherever, you're on that line, the other, they rank the second, the third, then you give them...
That's right.
Their votes.
Their votes. So you start all the way over, so you do a round, right? You do a round, and you go all the way through till somebody gets 50%, okay? And then you start all the way over again with everybody's ballots, because you've got to fill three spots, and you look at everybody's ballots, and you drop off that person who's already been declared a candidate, and you run through the whole thing until you get somebody else who's 50. We do the same way on caucus night, when you're trying to let, three county delegates, it's the same exact way we do it on caucus night, and it works.
But it may make more sense when you say, well, you tally the votes, you find your very first 50'er, then you start over.
Then you start over.
And you run over, and you don't count any votes for that person that's already won, and you just...
You look at their second.
If they voted first, you drop the second.
You drop the bottom one off until they're, you have a round, and somebody doesn't get the first.
That's right.
But the first 50'er on those four that you had, she ended up losing.
Well, no, that was just an...
Well, no, so in one example, she had 50%, but when they, when they did the seventh scenario, she only had 35.
They started over again and said, okay, that one got 37, the other one got 38.
They should change, I mean, as I'm not... That, that would have helped, that.
But it is possible that you could be ahead, and then when the votes are reshuffled, you end up behind, but the idea is that you're finding the most preferred candidate.
That's exactly right. Can I remember Carter? Forget the video.
Okay.
No, but those are two different scenarios, right?
Yeah, those are supposed to be two separate...
Because the first scenario, that person would have won.
She should have won.
She didn't win, in the first scenario, she didn't.
And the second one, it was more convoluted.
She won out of the gates, right?
Right.
The first tally, she got more than 50%, you end up to do the weird magic.
But you did.
Yeah. The second example, nobody had 50 or more, so now we're gonna run through this process.
Here's the way that I remember it best, every voter gets his thingy into the end. So under our current system, if you have 10 candidates, and your candidate gets the lowest amount, you really, I mean, you're kind of...
You have no more say.
But when you use ranked choice voting, you're staying in it to the very end, and even if it's your ninth, 10th, and 11th votes, and there's 20 candidates, I mean, you're still in it to the very end, and so the candidates who get elected are truly the preferred candidates of the majority of the population, and that just doesn't always happen today because of votes.
When they did, I called them out on this, and they just kind of turned their note out, but at the state convention, when we were electing for the special seat for Provo's mayor, sorry, naming yourself in here.
Yeah, on purpose.
Yeah, okay, when they were going through it, they were reading the bylaws, and they were dragging it out, you know, like they typically do when they're voting. So does this have a provision that if a certain percentage of them equal less than the last percentage, does it drop them off? I don't know how to explain it fully, but we found it in the bylaws that, so, the first person had 42%, the second one was 31%, 27, and then there was like three of them that didn't calculate up to 27%?
Right, yeah.
And in that system, it should boot all three of those out, because they can't combine beat the last place?
With ranked choice voting, they don't do it that way. That is, that's helpful to the process when you have multiple rounds.
Right.
And when you're gonna be there, when you're gonna be there all day, you're dropping two or three off at a time, because you don't want to stay there another two or three hours to vote.
It takes forever.
But in this, soccer, that is...
Yeah, it's different for you.
And it doesn't really matter at that point in time, so...
Correct.
If you're trying to fill multiple, multiple slots seems to be the concern, I mean, with the mayor, it's not, council, there's always two to three.
There's actually a specific provision within the law that talks about multiple winner campaigns, multiple winner elections, and it's, but again, it's the same concept as for single winner elections, and you go through it, you try to get to 50%, if no one gets to 50%, you drop the last person off, you're going to number two, so when somebody gets to 50%, all their number twos still go back into the pot, and you just stay until the end, same, really, it's the same concept. This might be interesting to you. When we started ranked choice voting within the parties, the parties have been using this for a long time in caucuses and conventions, and when we started doing it, there was a lot of misinformation out there, things like, well, this is gonna help minority voters win, voters that are, or minority candidates who aren't very popular are maybe the one issue candidates, and they would talk about the fact that this was gonna help certain factions within the party. And so I kind of bought into that and said, okay, I'm against it, if you're telling me that this doesn't work, I'm against it. And then we just started seeing it work. In 2002, we had 12 candidates in the Republican Party running to succeed Jim Hansen, and we used ranked choice voting, and instead of being in there for 10 hours, 11 hours, they were out of there in about two or three hours, because they only had to vote once. The counters had to spend more time there that day, but not the voters. And I started, and at least for me, I started seeing that this system really is voter-friendly, and you started seeing candidates, instead of attacking each other, which they're prone to do both within the parties and in municipal elections, I've been on city council, and they tend to, they tend to attack your integrity, and they attack your, you know, who you are and what you're all about and what your experience is, and instead of going down that road, you have to... And instead of going down that road, you have to talk about issues. You have to talk about the future of your city, or the future of the state, when you're using ranked-choice voting. So that's why I, gradually, I became a believer in this, in this process. This past year, we didn't use ranked-choice voting in a special election, uh, when we were having the convention for the special election for the, to succeed James Chaffetz. And we had candidates who were going after each other, who were attacking each other, sending out mailers attacking each other. It was terrible. You know, I mean, I was embarrassed, and I wasn't even on the ballot, I wasn't, I wasn't voting. And if they had used ranked-choice voting, the incentives would have been there for them to stop doing that. And instead of finding mailers that, that talk about how less conservative you are than someone else, you're finding mailers that are saying, hey, let's talk about education and taxation and regulations, and, and to talk about issues.
I love anything that gets the issues focus, the discussion focused more on issues. I think we don't talk about issues enough.
I, I like a lot of the concepts of this. I do have one challenge, though, is that if you have a, like, for city council, when you have three candidates running, or three openings, and maybe you have twelve candidates, and a lot of people are just gonna put one, two, three, and stop there. Once one of their people's eliminated, then they're basically out. Their votes aren't counting anymore. Make two of them, and then presume none of them. So I can see a lot of people not really understanding this, and going through the whole process, and so they're getting eliminated out and voting.
If you choose to do this, you've got till November of two thousand and nineteen, and there is voter education process that has to take place. You're, you're exactly right. We're not gonna discuss this on voters. We're gonna use, we're gonna put something in the utility bill. We're gonna use the email. We're gonna have, uh, citizen nights here in the council chamber where we're gonna talk about it. Everyone will know well and well that how it works. Uh, you don't want to spring any changes in, in an election on voters. That, that is, you know, a difference. We get people ununlocked it all the time because, uh, elections get voter involved.
With, with that said, we have seen many municipalities have a lot of success with this. Voters actually grasp it better than a lot of concerns out there whether or not they were...
Exit pollings suggest voters like ranked-choice voting better than, you know, than the traditional...
Next steps real quick is, if you choose to do this, you have to tell the lieutenant governor before they're in one of the odd number here, declare intent, and it's gotta be signed by the election officer, the municipal authority. Um, just stating that municipal authority can do it, and has resources, or is coordinated with the county, or whatnot, to make it happen. Um, and then we're here, Stan, um, runs the ranked-choice voting center of Utah, uh, which is a five-one C, four, three, full. Um, and this entity will be around for quite some time, and available to help with education, with voter outreach, with helping get things set up, questions, all kinds of stuff along the way.
One question. So if, if we say we want to do it by January first, and then you call feed in March, are you stuck with it? So once you say that we're going to do this, and you announce it to the lieutenant governor's office, I'm not saying we wouldn't, I'm just...
No, I, I...
Does that make sense?
I don't see a reason why you wouldn't build a back out of it.
Okay.
According to the Supreme Court, you can take your name off it after a petition, so...
I, we don't really answer that, we need to find out.
Okay.
But we do know that the deadline is the first of January twenty nineteen, and so that's kind of our target. But we can find out. There's nothing in the legislation that contemplates that.
Okay.
Well, the issue I would have is if you did it, and then waited until after you would have had your primary election, you're gonna be stuck at that point, because there's no way out of that.
You're stuck there.
But even that, that's June, when you have to, I think we wanted to start the ball from there. So if you're not up and rolling, you're gonna be...
Right.
You're stuck, you're in the chute, you're headed out.
Um, and I'll send you these slides. It's got some links to some resources with a lot of information on ranked-choice voting. And then Stan in court holdaways information, uh, so you can contact me. I'll just send them to you.
Any exciting, any exciting legislation you have? Anything you're working on, you want to report on?
That was quite the transition there.
Well, we don't see it very often, so I just thought we'd, we'd see if you had something.
No, that's great.
I was gonna thank you for coming out on tour of Utah. Now we can do that.
Okay. Sam, it's a tour of Utah.
That, that was awesome, by the way, all of that. Yeah. Legislation, uh... I've got a few things I'm working on, trying to think of right now. I usually don't get, go in too hard on it until about next month or November. Got some, um, as you know, I've been working on a lot of agriculture bills over the years. Got most of those passed. There's some follow-up cleanup on some of those, and there'll always be more. It's local, small farms, and, and helping them get their products out, things like that. Trying to think what else. Uh, got some stuff dealing with, um, mechanics liens and different things, and, uh, some different bills that people from that industry have brought to me.
Should make it easier or harder?
Some mechanics things. We, we had a bill last year that removed the lien recovery fund, which is basically a government bailout that taxed all contractors. It taxed all contractors, it just, whenever Dopples felt like they needed to fill up this fund, they would just assess all the contractors to get a bunch of money and stick it into this fund. And then if there was ever a lien issue, they would draw from the fund. So in my opinion, incentivized bad behavior, you know, from homeowners, or from contractors, subcontractors, suppliers, not, you know, doing the due diligence on who they're extending credit to, and different things like this. Uh, we got rid of that fund last year. So I told the guys, I said, hey, if you're gonna get rid of this, you need to do something, because it really protected the homeowner. So when the homeowner goes to refinance, or close, or something, and all of a sudden, there's this lien on their property from somebody they've never met in their entire lives, but they've paid the bill already, right? Um, they don't wanna pay the bill again, they've already paid for it. Uh, they withdraw from this fund. Now the fund's gone, right? So how do you protect them? So we're looking at different ways to, uh, still protect the homeowner that way when they get in those situations. Yeah, it's gonna be a battle, though. Um, anyway, but there's that, and, uh, I know we've been talking a little bit about the road, and getting it down here, and different things. So please keep me updated on that, and where I can apply leverage, or help, or support, or insight, please let me know.
We appreciate that very much.
That's the issue, Brian, can we add that?
It'd be fantastic.
Um, one more thing, I, I cast out a one-page flyer. It really has a simple explanation of what ranked-choice voting is and what it's about. I would just remind you that it has almost been announced by the legislature, there was vigorous debate for a couple of years over it. And in the end, uh, the legislature recognizes the benefits, just like we, Paul and Tia Tenaj, and they believe us already, and they say it's... There are a few people out there who don't like ranked-choice voting, but I have yet to meet one legitimate criticism of it. Um, I guess one possible criticism might be this idea that some of you have mentioned that there are lots and lots of people on the ballot. How do you make the choice between the tenth and the eleventh person? But other than that, um, this helps our election process in substantive ways that really can benefit cities.
Yeah. On something like that, if you did have twelve, and you decided it's six, you vote, you rank from one to six, there might be twelve this direction, but there's only six this way.
Yeah, you could, absolutely.
That would get most people to have six, if they wanna vote for him, they...
I would think it's...
That's what I'm saying, that's what I meant, you vote, you do many, and then it gets too...
Has that some weight, nine, put on our ballot, or that comes from legislation? We have to lose some weight?
Uh, it might be a little bit both, in our discussion with county clerk. I know Minne- Minne- Minneapolis has had situations where they've had like, I don't know if this is true or not, but I've been told they've had like fifty people apply to run for mayor. You know, and it's ranked-choice voting, you know, type of thing, like huge thing, and... But people don't, you don't rank all fifty, but people will rank up to about six or seven.
Right.
Because you, you get six or seven top runners at the end of the day, anyway. And they, they rank those people.
You may not have to report them, I think people just generally will...
Yeah. They'll, they'll throw them out themselves.
It would be on the ballot, that's, that's a two-hundred-and-fifty square grid, if you, if you left it that way. So that, does that make sense? Because you have fifty this way, you're gonna run.
That means, you know, we have great voter engagement, but we're doing a really bad job.
Right. I mean, I would, I would say you go out six, if you had fifty, maybe go ten, with fifty, but fifty, that's...
I think there's some places that do.
Three, yeah, and I, and I would think...
You should call it out, I think just limits it to three. So, yeah.
I think that would be an integral part of limiting the amount of people that could, you know, run for a certain office.
You can limit the amount.
Now, because you don't want fifty.
But you, you would limit the amount you could vote.
That's what I meant.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I have a question. So on the, on the voting machines, is it a, does the county, do we have to rent that from the county? Is there a separate, uh, module that we have to rent? How, how expensive is it for us to do that?
So here is what, um, we've discovered. If you have the newest equipment, the vendors wanna give you a surcharge. Um, it's, it's done on a county-by-county level, so they distribute amongst all the cities who want to do it. And we're making presentations to every city we can find in the state who might wanna do this. There, I'll give you an example. ESNS said, look, our ranked-choice voting module is an extra fifteen thousand for the county. Uh, but we'll give you a significant discount in this first year. So, so I don't know what that, what significant discount means, but I'm guessing it's less than half that. And that's, and that's distributed amongst all the cities who want to use it. So by the time we're done, how much could it be? Maybe an extra seventy-five hundred dollars.
But that's also considering you're eliminating the primary.
Right, so you gotta offset the, the elimination of the primary with a slight extra cost from the vendor. Um, and the county will still do it for you, and they still will process it amongst the same...
So we have to work that out, yeah?
Yes. And then, Utah County's pretty well-known, almost.
Brian Thompson actually went and testified in favor of this bill, because he's, like me, he's been watching it from the party for years and years, and understands the benefits.
Scott Holgerson gets it very well.
And Amelia Powers, who's gonna be our new county legislator, implemented. Uh, we're in the process of dedicating her right now, and she's very enthusiastic about it. So they'll work.
Okay, Stan, Representative Roberts, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Well, we'll adjourn now until six o'clock.
Whenever the term was, when it came time to renew, I would sit here and sit up.
As much money as goes on, I would say.
It's so catty.
You're there for like ten hours, and after a while, you're like...
It was very, very educational. I was, I stayed two years.
Yeah, that is, uh, we should, we have a plan, we have a party here.
Wife should provide you. Can't break that one.
Oh, sorry. Well...
Well, you were, you were great, though. Yeah, you, yeah, she was so good.
Yes, so we... Come on, man. But we don't know, we don't...
I'm just kidding.
How's Richard?
It's amazing, sometimes it's just like, call up, you know, start moving.
Can't we do like, you're here, probably.
Yeah.
You've got your pants sealed. Good job. Hi, Linda and Kim Laffer, how are you? Good, good. And is this your mom? Yeah, it's somebody from New York, basically, out of the award, pretty nice. So she'll do it, and they'll get it, and stuff. Yeah, I got one of them, so let's, let's hold. But it's not fair. She's been doing it on, not her property.
Exactly. Then you have a fake tax.
Or not give to us. Move again.
Oh, yeah. But tonight I don't have.
Now, this wasn't the first.
This is now.
That's too many.
Thank you.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the city council meeting. Our mayor is, has the great pleasure of going down a cruise, and he's got to leave right now. So he got the, we have the short end of the stick. Actually, no, it's a pleasure to be here. But we'd like to get started.
Can I make a motion?
Yes.
So we, well, I'm point Councilman Doug Welton, who's Mayor Pro Tem.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. First off, we'd like to start with a prayer by Councilman Hewitt, and then Councilman Christiansen, Alitos, and the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our dear gracious fathers, we come before you this day. We're so grateful for the blessing we have. We're grateful that we have an opportunity in this wonderful city of Pace. And for the employees who work here and are dedicated to this city, and for the fun events and nice events that we've been able to have recently. I ask that thou bless us as, as council members and mayor and staff. We can make wise decisions, and we can be blessed, and please bless all the citizens, and we say the season of Jesus Christ, amen.
Will the audience please rise? Please pledge with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, once again, welcome to the city council meeting. We're glad to have you all here. Glad to see so many of you here. We'd like to start with the approval of the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda for August the fifteenth, twenty eighteen.
We have a first, we have a second. We have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Just for clarification, is Mayor Pro Tem for I do get to vote, correct? Because I'm still a council member. Okay, making sure, this is my first time. Okay, section D, petitions, remonstrances, and communications. We'd like to open it up to a public forum. In the public forum, anyone from the public can come and speak. You have three minutes to speak. You can present anything, although we ask that if it's an item that's on the agenda, that you wait till the appropriate time. If it's something that's not on the agenda, the microphone is yours, the time is yours, and you have three minutes. And when you come to the microphone, state your name, and... That's good.
Do you really want to know who I am?
I know who you are. The camera wants to know.
I've been going to come to city council and address this issue for quite some time, but due to business concerns and stuff, I haven't had time to do this. But we have an issue on Seventy Hundred West, out there where the townhomes are, where the speed limit abruptly changes from thirty miles an hour to twenty-five miles an hour, then goes up to thirty miles an hour within Seventeen Hundred Feet. It's inconsistent. It's not marked properly. There is no signs noting that the speed limit is going to change down to twenty-five miles an hour in either direction, which it should have. And those of us that travel off that way, either to Goshen, Genoa, Spring Lake, West Mountain area, have either the county sheriff, Pace and City, or someone out there giving tickets because someone forgot to slow down down to the twenty-five. Now, the townhomes have, is a gated community, and there are no children out there playing on the street. It's inconsistent because we've got agriculture on the other side, and if you take and look at the state code book, it says that the city can set the, the speed limit based off of what it feels the need is. But it also states that it should be marked properly. I would respectfully ask that the city consider correcting that so that the speed limit is consistent, that we either take it to thirty miles an hour, which it is on the other side of the intersection going into the business park, or leave it at thirty-five, which it would be from Thirty, from the Frontage Road, which is Seventeen Hundred West, to the intersection and all the way up Eight South. I think this is an inconsistent marking, and I know you don't like to hear the words, but it really is a speed trap. And I think it's time that we as citizens of, or you as citizens, because I live outside of county, happen to be one of those guys that have been stopped and never ticketed, it's time to fix it. It's time to mark it correctly, and I would appreciate it if you would take that under consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. You can give with us on that? Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, if there's no one else, I would, we'll move on to, we have a mayor's award that I get to give out. I'm kind of excited. We're going to switch microphones. Oh, she's not, oh. Is Jamie Hill here? Jamie Hill's not here. Six fifteen. Okay, we're going to move on to the next item. I just like walking back and forth between microphones. Okay, next item on the list is scout, attendants, group staff, and council reports. Any staff and council reports?
Sorry, any staff and council reports?
Mayor Pro Tem and council, just a couple of updates. The slurry seal project is underway down on the southwest area. Some people are complaining about it. They don't like how it looks and that, but, you know, an asphalt overlay is definitely different with a slurry seal. The overlay's smooth and goes in right, but the slurry seal is not going to ever be that smooth. So Ken's been out monitoring it, so we'll see if he finds anything that's wrong, but I haven't seen any big deal in my road with one of them, but it was done, so. We've obviously still had a lot of water leaks, and we've started repair on the sewer collapse that we had. So I don't think it's very far yet, but they at least got the first little stick of pipe in today, and then we'll hopefully get the rest in tomorrow and the next day, so. So if you have any questions or anything.
I have three questions for you, Travis. One is, how far up is the sewer pipeline defective? Do we know yet?
About fifty-five hundred feet is all, is what the concrete section is, so that's what we're looking at getting designed in their place.
About a mile estimate cost?
No idea at this point, because we're trying to figure out what size we need to, you know, if we need to upsize it or just put back in what, you know, is in there. So that's kind of why we don't have a cost yet. We're trying to get with our consultant and kind of figure that out with the modeling, and then once we know that, we'll have a better idea, but it'll... I'm going to guess it's going to be probably a million and a half or more. I don't know for sure.
Update on the well, the pump?
Yeah, I haven't heard if it's come in yet, but the pump should be in this week, and then they've got to add some parts to it, and then we'll all know more. I don't think it'll start getting installed, but it should be pretty close by now, so.
So it'll probably be bound down with irrigation?
Pretty much. But no, they should hopefully, hopefully, I'm hoping next week they should start installing that, but I'll get a better update when I'll have Brent get a hold of it, so.
And the last thing, the irrigation, we going to have enough water go to October first?
For the city, yes. We, we will about reuse all our allotment, which is fine, so we should make it. And the Highline Canal will turn off at the end of September, so that's when the system will go off, because we don't have any water to keep it. So we, yeah, we should be fine to manage through the end.
When they turn the water off? Earlier or later?
That was the last thing we heard. But when the Highline Canal goes off, we are done with you, so.
Yeah, I think they still have to deliver water to us if we have water.
I'll ask you to turn your microphone on, please. Thank you.
So they're having a meeting tonight, so you can talk to them tomorrow.
I'll get all the Marty and see what picks us.
Do you want us to harass Brent every time you see water come up to the ground, or do you think he knows about it?
We know of quite a few. But you know, if you'd like to remind us.
Aye. I hate the Badger, and I know they prioritize them the longer they've been there, and some of them take a week or two to actually get to the point where they are, but. I noticed one over on Arrowhead Trolley today, yeah, Monday, I believe it was.
Yeah, they were, I think they've already fixed that one or they were going to this week, so, yeah, we've had an exceptional number of water leaks like this.
Was Jesus given up?
Yep.
Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem, City Council, and members of the public, I'm glad to have last week overlapped. Our guys are home resting now, hopefully. I'd like to thank the parks and streets and Janine, who've done a fantastic job and helped us out where we needed it, so I appreciate their help. The celebration went off pretty smooth. We had a few minor, minor issues, but other than that, it went very well, so. Just to ground up our calls for service in September, excuse me, August, I'm jumping ahead. Hundred and one arrests, a hundred and ninety offenses, two hundred and seven citations, two hundred and seventy-four violations, a thousand eighty-three calls for service, three DUIs, three hundred and eight traffic stops, and forty-three traffic accidents investigated. Fifty months ago, so.
Do DUIs, that's not just alcohol, it's like any impaired substance driving?
I would honestly be interested to know if we could reduce the number of traffic accidents if we maybe put some stop signs in the city. Because to me, I'm seeing, I drive down, I stop at every intersection because you'll watch, and there's not a single person ever turns their head, they just, they just go. Most of our accidents are at controlled intersections. There are controlled intersections? Yeah. Okay, that's, the information's good to know, so. Yeah, it's, it's kind of crazy to look at it that way, but most of our areas of town don't have speed signs or, you know, stop signs. We don't have a lot of, a lot of accidents out there. So mostly red lights, that type of violation.
Have you bound to hire a new officer yet from the new money?
Yes, we have. We have hired one. He's still in the police academy, but he'll be getting out here in about eight weeks, so we're excited to get him.
Sounds like you. I wondered about, have you had any more with broken windows and?
In the cars?
Cars.
We haven't had.
Did you catch the?
I don't know where they're at for sure on that one. I can check and let you know.
Yeah.
But we've had a few throughout the year, along with the graffiti, but the graffiti's kind of slowed down now. The kids are back at school. We suspect some of those broken windows come from the same crew.
But no arrests or citations?
I'm sure. I'll let you know.
And one more question real quick, since we got here. To Mr. Bailey's point, is that something that we can change?
Well, we'll, obviously, can't, Travis, and we'll, we'll look at it and see what we need to do, and I know they're putting another housing project across the street there. So they want to look at that speed limit and evaluate and make it consistent throughout the area.
Thank you.
I just wanted to take a minute and thank the staff for this holiday and the council. You don't get thanked all the time, but you were at a lot of the events, and it's appreciated. It was well-attended. Everything, I think, went well. Lot of people, and so just wanted to thank the council and the staff. They, they worked really hard this past weekend. You got tired at night. I, I woke up one morning, I think it was, I can't remember what it was. Probably Sunday morning, and I had a text from Doug and the mayor. I didn't hear any.
Sorry?
No, no, it was good. I usually stay up later, but I was exhausted, and so, yeah, it was, but it was very well-attended, and I thought the council did a great job being at a lot of the events, so thanks.
Mayor Pro Tem and council and public, just wanted to give an update on the pickleball project at the park. We're going to, they've given preliminary plans to us. We're beginning to review those, and we'll bring those to the DRC group on Monday. And then tomorrow, we'll do a walk-through there on the property, and hopefully, we can begin demolition soon, maybe as early as next week, so.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
I just make a comment on that for the people here in the audience, that we passed a park tax on, as one cent on every dollar about a year and a half ago, and that's what the money is that we're using. One of the things we're using is to build these pickleball courts.
And you know that our beautiful tennis courts that we have on the southeast corner of the park that have been such an eyesore, those will be the pickleball courts and some basketball courts. So look forward to that being used a lot more, and it'll definitely beautify the city better than what's there. Thank you.
Mayor, Pro Tem, council members and public, I don't know if I can play tennis now.
Both the junior highs have tennis courts, the high school has some.
I'll try one of those.
Pull a fire truck out.
Sorry. Just to let you know, been busy last couple of weeks, especially with the wild fires, we had several up in the Payson Canyon area, we have three or four that are actively burning, but there are single two or three trees, so they're monitoring those. We have one that's become a little more active today up on Mount Baldy, we, we get called on that, we get up about every day this week checking, because everything's it's a new start. But most of them are distant, off the road, so they'll be accessed only by helicopter or hiking in for several hours. So Forest Service is watching and keeping track of those fires and their progress, but nothing significant at this point.
Did lightning?
Lightning strikes, yes, yes. Thank goodness we haven't had an arson since our area like they have up in Sonnet, so.
An IED?
Yep. Yeah, they've been busy. We have had a few out on West Mountain from people shooting things they shouldn't be shooting, tracer rounds, O male jackets, things that they shouldn't be shooting there and cause fires, so as we deal with those and the deal ends, goes after them, it's suppression cost. Also, we're working with the elementary schools getting ready for our coloring contest for Park Prevention Week, to let you know as that gets a little closer, we're just starting handles out so the kids have a couple of weeks to color. And then we collect those back in, then we judge those colors, the pictures being colored, and then we pick a winner from every grade level in the elementary school, we'll pick them up, provide lunch, do a presentation and then take them all back, so it's kind of a fun event. Working with our, our crews, we've started yesterday with our day crews, they'll be a lot better for our response time, we've had some response times, ten minutes, fifteen minutes, so they should be out of the building within a couple of minutes. Same setup we've done before, just rail to pan more, other cities around, Santaquin, Mapleton, Santaquin, Stanishburg have been doing it for about a year now, so they'll help us out tremendously, so we'll let you know as that goes along how things go there. But anyway, if things change up the canons on those fires, we'll let you know, and your support.
Mayor, Pro Tem and City Council, I thought I could be an update on youth court, I'm not sure if you're even aware that Payson City has a youth court, but we, music here has taken over the youth court from the police department and, of course, with their permission. And we are now a certified youth court, we've modeled it after Springville's youth court and we actually held our first youth court last month, which was pretty successful, and so we have a group of about sixteen kids that sit on our youth court and we trained them, they actually went and observed Springville Youth Court and so these kids can come to youth court as an alternative to juvenile court for first time events, and we will be holding them monthly unless we get too busy, we might have to go there twice a month. Springville does theirs twice a month, but so far we're just gonna try monthly and we'll see how that works out, but just wanted you to know that we actually use your council chamber and the judge offered us his chamber, but it's actually too small for as many kids that we have. Stitch is too tiny, we have to have it in here because we, they all sit along here, but I think it's been a really positive experience for both the kids sitting on the youth court and for the kids and the parents coming to our youth court, and so our kids have a, kind of a little toolbox of dispositions they can give for the kids to make up for what they've done, so, anyway, I think it's turned into a really positive thing for everyone. Thank you. Hey, what night you had that? The first Tuesday of the month, we've just kept that the same night as the police department has held it and, and kept that consistent.
Didn't leave once, have a youth court?
Well, I think, I'm not sure of the history, but I think they've had them for, for quite a while.
Okay.
It was just becoming a big, a big thing for the police department and time consuming and so they asked if maybe.
That's great.
Yeah, we considered taking it over and, and we did, and we modeled it after Springville's and it is pretty time intensive to get it set up in a, in a manner with, you know, and the training and there's a pretty big system with the state to be certified and we actually are using Springville's policies and procedures and adapted it to, to fit our needs and Owen Santaquin is actually joining us, and so they're sending their kids to us and one of their police officers is sitting in as an advisor, because they wanted an alternative thing for their kids to, rather than just juvenile court, so it's turning into a good thing for all of us, so I just wanted to kind of let you know about that, thanks.
Thank you, I think that's, I'm just gonna put a little plug into that, I think anytime that we, we get our youth involved civically, I think that's a great life lesson and it builds up our community in a positive manner, where we're looking, working together for solutions and trying to see what's happening, so I appreciate your time and your service. Would Janine can yell at us, because we didn't throw candy for moving vehicles?
I know, I've been trying to decide what they're saying, so I think it's pretend mayor and council, is that what we're saying? All right, so I wanted to thank you all for your support for Onion Days, just the past five years I've done this, I noticed each of your, all the events and particular events, so thank you, that means a lot, you know, to have one of you there at all, at all the events really, so thank you so much, I think Linda was at the park as much as I was, so thank you. So I wanted to thank all the city employees, every single person as an employee took part to make Onion Days successful, we have a fantastic, well, everyone is fantastic, but the park crew, they're just my shadows, that they just are my background who takes care of every little teeny thing from setting up a chair to a table, to all the little tiny details, I'm just texting them all the time, just to try to keep everything running smoothly, so thank you so much for your support and, and that's so much, so thank you.
Thank you, Janine.
Thanks, Janine, I've got a couple of questions for you, Janine, or probably not questions, but statements, there was a couple of floats that had cannons that shot off candy and I don't know how we control that, but.
Yeah.
Okay.
Did you knock the pool now? Yes, absolutely.
So then it goes to the grass, so it's.
Yeah, you just need, yeah.
And the other thing. The other thing is. The other thing is the go-karts this year, they didn't have any participants, they brought a couple of go-karts, just, but they didn't have anybody that actually came to be, so you know.
Right, so, yeah, no, I, I did know that too, so his team, he usually comes, we adopted it from Salem City, so they have a team that rides, so usually they've come the past two years and they were not, they were not able to come this year, so that's what I, I got with Frank and he's over it and told him, if your team, you need to tell me if your team cannot come by June, they, they have to be coming or it's not an event, I mean, because I don't have anyone really who's gonna make a go-kart, I said it's just an activity for us to come and watch, so, so I will definitely, he's aware of that too, yeah.
And I've had several people tell me that I hit someone with candy, so if that person complains.
I have heard no complaints, Linda.
Haven't you?
No.
Okay, okay.
I saw in the flyer it said you could charge him with assault, so, she just confessed, chief, so.
When people got laid, I drew it really hard, though. And I do have one complaint though, on, on our float, I got left in the middle of nowhere all by myself for like five city blocks.
And I had to run two blocks.
I kept referring to myself as the intermission entertainment, whatever made me dance. It was not a pretty tight.
Well, I was in with a lady in the golf cart, so she would come and get me when I lagged behind, too bad you weren't in with her.
So can I ask you one thing? Sure. The remote control cars that we used to do, was there no interest or, because I've had people ask me about that, the remote control cars, you know, when they used to do the remote control cars, they had the little?
That was, that was a downtown event that they did, so that was with Onion Days.
But it had to do with Onion Days, it's probably been ten, twelve years.
Yeah, that was a downtown.
That's before.
I'm just wondering, I mean, but I'm looking for new events, so I would like to talk to you about that, if we could get advertised, I think that sounds fun, so. People are talking to me, but they, they love that.
Right, yeah, no, I've never even heard of it till right now, so, yeah, come talk to me, it's a fun.
Okay.
She doesn't tell me she's gonna talk to her.
No, no, I'm gonna have you more hands on work in the next year, instead of then take down.
Did you hear that?
Yes.
So wear your shorts and t-shirts.
I'll come ready to go.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Hi, council, just wanted to give a quick chamber report, September we were, excuse me, August, I'm doing it too, we were excited to have a grand opening of one of our newest businesses and I know many of you were there, were able to attend, we are excited to celebrate with John Chaney and his Q90 company, so we're excited to have them here in Payson and as one of our newest businesses. We're wrapping up our summer events, our final movie will be the fourteenth, our final summer movie in the park, Pray for Good Weather, we have been rained out in years past, so this one will wrap up at the Santaquin Park and we will be showing The Incredibles as we get ready for the new one that's, that just is coming out or has come out, so we're excited for that, we'll have some fun activities for our kids. We do want to introduce those who haven't met our new executive director, Andrea, she is here with us tonight and will be taking over Shelley's position, she was asked to step down, so we're excited to have Andrea on our team, and to celebrate some of our changes, we've also implemented a new logo for the Payson-Santaquin area chamber and we will be having our grand opening ribbon cutting since we've now moved to Main Street, so I have an invitation for each of you, we'd love for you to come to that, it's on the twenty-fifth of September and we're just doing an open house from noon to three, if anybody wants to stop by and see where the new chamber office is on Main Street, we would love to have you there, so.
Fantastic. Thank you. Any other staff? Jay? Tracy?
No, I'm break.
We usually hear from you.
I've tried to give you a break.
Oh, we appreciate that. You don't have anything, okay. Uh, we'll go to council, councilwoman Hyatt?
So I just want to thank everybody, I heard awesome things about everything at Onion Days, a lot of people were talking about the fireworks and how we really went out this year and they really appreciated it because, you know, they go up there, they park, they have to walk or they sit there, I watched them from the park, I had a good seat, but yeah, thank everyone who helped put that on because I had a lot of comments how wonderful it was, thank you.
I want to personally thank all of the park department too, for all that they did. I, like Janine said, Dave and I were there at eight o'clock in the morning and I know on, we left a little earlier Saturday night, but we were there late Sunday night and didn't leave till seven on Monday, but I saw the crew picking up garbage, walking around, and I so appreciate them, and I definitely appreciate Janine, she goes to a lot of work for the children's parade, for everything, and it all flows so well and I really appreciate her, she's got great skills in organizing and everything flows beautifully, so I want to thank her personally, thanks, Janine.
Ditto that for Janine, does a great job, thank you, also all of city employees for Onion Days, just a great event, it seems like every time I go, it gets bigger and bigger, we get more people farther down the parade route, it used to be that towards the end, you didn't have hardly anybody on the parade route, but now you got to try to figure out how to save candy, which we never now do for the end, because there's still, there are a lot of people down there, so. And, and so just great, a lot of great events, so thank you very much, got a couple of other things, as, we have our golf event for the council, everybody so they know, on September twenty-sixth at eight, eight-thirty, and I know Val Hale from Go-Ed, I saw him today, he's coming to that event, so we're getting, some people are gonna come, so. And just today and tomorrow, I'm going, I'm going to an outdoor recreation conference and it's interesting to find out some of the things that the state's doing, like they even have, just hired a person that helps cities become destiny, how to become a destination town and how to put together the recreational opportunities, and that's one thing we looked at with our branding, is we want to be a destination for recreation, so, yeah, there's gonna be lots of opportunities, working with some of the people from the state and we invite them to our golf event too, so, that's all I have, thanks.
I was just gonna say, I agree with everybody, it was a great event, I didn't get to see the fireworks, they sounded great.
Me too.
Me and Linda, we were watching the Mary Poppins and I thought, oh, it'll get over about the right time, I didn't park my car because I couldn't sit and watch it and it was long, done by the time we were out, but it was well worth it, it was a very good production and I appreciate that, I'd heard a little bit of facts about that, that we're one of the, the longest running community theater in the state, which was pretty cool, and so I did enjoy that and the parade was great, there were lots of people, that's how I got left behind, is I still had candy, so I was really popular for three city blocks, but thank you, Janine, for all you do, and the parks, I think they're underappreciated, but they do a good job.
Okay, thank you, I, I would like to echo what's been said, I, I really appreciate our city employees, all of them, takes a, takes a village to raise a kid, I guess is what they say in this case, it takes a village to hold a big event like this, and it's not just our employees, we have so many volunteers that put in so much time, and it was so fun to see them all involved and engaged in our city and taking pride in our city, so I appreciate all of them, the parks crew, I'm gonna echo that, not only were they doing their jobs, they were all smiling, at least when I saw them, and they were proactively doing their jobs and I really appreciated that, and the bright green shirts, we couldn't hide, and so it was really good to see everyone and it was really fun, I got to go to the children's parade, the fire department showing, the parades, the flowers show, the art show, car show, Mary Poppins fireworks, I mean, it was, it was all incredible and we had nothing but, but glowing comments, so I appreciate that. Okay, moving on.
Can you go back to number two?
To number two, I'm going to switch microphones again. Okay, is Jamie Hill here? Jamie, will you come on front here? So we'd really like to, to publicly thank and recognize Jamie, this summer, a few weeks ago, there was an incidence, you should stand right here so the camera and everyone can see how awesome that is. We had an incident at the pool where we had a toddler, a four-year-old, from what I understand, fell in the pool, wasn't doing very well and, and we needed some help, and Jamie is a nurse, if I understand correctly, and saw that there was some help that needed to take place, the child was gray, as I understand, as they were taken from the pool and not doing very well, and Jamie took her training, jumped in without asking any questions, performed CPR and saved this child. It really does take a, a community and we are better together, all of us. I'd like to read a letter from the mayor, says, Dear Jamie, on behalf of the Payson City Council in Payson City, I would like to express our sincerest thank you for your heroic role, role in assisting to rescue and save the life of one of our pool patrons. On Wednesday, August first, two thousand eighteen, your quick action and CPR skills helped to save a child who had went under the water at the Payson City Pool, we appreciate you jumping in to assist in this rescue effort, your care and concern is truly a sign of a good Samaritan and so heartwarming. Your care and concern is truly a sign of a good Samaritan, and so heartwarming. Your composure in handling this situation is also very much appreciated. Thank you again for your valuable efforts, sincerely, William R. Wright, Mayor." And so, we have a little small gift we'd like to share, we've got a certificate for a good Samaritan, and some goodies here.
You better put two people down there, will you? One more come down.
Um, do we have any scouts in attendance? One scout, all right, Linda, you're up.
Okay.
Why don't you come up front here, Linda's gonna ask you to, well, she'll, I'll let her ask you questions.
Okay, let's have your name first, okay? What is it? Ethan, this is to shake. Ethan Pace, we're gonna get you a certificate.
Is that from the founder of Payson Stockface?
Yes, it is.
Fantastic.
Hey, good job. Okay, one question we like to ask. Ooh, he's ready. What do you like best about scouting? I want you to turn around and tell everybody. What do you like best? What kind of stuff do you like to learn about? About the wild, that's great, okay. Congratulations for being a great scout, we appreciate you coming, and we've got a certificate for you. Oh, and we want you to shake.
Can we shake our hands, and let you come right around the front here?
Come on, there you go.
And Sarah, how does it get you a certificate saying you were here? Okay, moving on, we are going to move on to the Mayor's Youth Recognition Award, uh, Tim Wefler and Rebecca Knapp. Rebecca Knapp is our, are you the Youth President or the Youth Mayor? Rebecca's our Youth Mayor, and we'll turn the time over to you.
Thank you, so the first one we have for tonight is Keller Simpson from Malibu, is he here? Come on up, thank you. So, his teachers say that Keller is a kind, funny, and curious person. He wants to be an entomologist someday, and actually brought edible bugs to school. He's a natural leader who people look up to, he's incredibly smart and well-read. Another teacher says that he's a model student and a role model to all the students. He's outgoing, fun, and engaged as a student. Here, ask Keller. The next one, if she could come up, is Linda Caspano. So, her teachers say that she's a fantastic peer tutor who goes above and beyond what is asked of her. She's such a wonderful friend to the students she peer tutors in and out of class. Her teachers say she's an amazing person who always shows respect and kindness to anyone who has, she has contact with, and is dedicated to making the world a better place around her at all times. And the last one is Thomas Mosher, if he could come up. He's a senior at the high school who's involved with the National Honor Society, and is a member of the Hope Squad, and involved with other activities at Payson High. He's in five concurrent enrollment classes through UBU, and still has a four-point-oh grade average.
Okay, will you send me a picture for Dave? Okay, now on to our Chamber Business of the Month, and Jade Walker.
Thank you, so, I'm excited, um, tonight to recognize one of Payson's oldest businesses as our September Business of the Month. Bailing Insurance Agency is truly Payson's hometown agency. They are the only agency that can say they have operated in Payson for over fifty years. I think Richard told me fifty-two?
Fifty-two.
Fifty-two years. Um, they are consistently supporting our youth. Richard and his team are huge supporters of our Kiwanis Club and many activities that the Kiwanis Club is involved with, as well as being an advocate for the Chamber. We're very excited tonight to recognize Bailing Insurance.
Thank you, this is an honor. Um, as a proud Payson Lion, um, and a graduate of Payson High School, I have always loved Payson. I have always felt like this is my hometown, and it's kind of interesting when you take a look at the, the insurance landscape of Payson, when you take a look at the majority of the companies that are here today, there was a bailing that started each one of those. Uh, so, and it was my, my father, which I'm extremely proud of. It's also been an honor to, uh, to continue to help the Chamber grow, because some of my policy holders, as business owners, if they buy a Chamber membership, I can give them an additional discount. So, as part of that sell process, I automatically just pull up the first couple pages for the Chamber membership, and collect that money upfront, so that I can take that down to the Chamber and say, here's another member of the Chamber. But, uh, Payson City has some great businesses, has some great people, and I'm glad that I am part of Payson. We are Payson's hometown, in charge of Payson City.
Thank you.
Good luck, fifty-two.
As one of our golf sponsors, Richard has the great, uh, pleasure of watching the City Council hit golf balls into the lake every year. Okay, we'd like to now move on to our, uh, public hearing. Uh, this is the public hearing for the plat amendment of the Gunnerston Plat A, including vacation of public utilities and easements and the creation of the Gunnerston Plat B. Uh, we have a staff presentation to start off with, Daniel.
Jill went to grab him.
Jill, okay. Well? Anybody have some lappy taffy wrappers that we can read jokes off of?
I hear you guys went quick through the last couple items.
We just saw that you got up and left.
I did.
So, we had to move things along to.
Oh, man. Uh, that's all right. Okay, so this first one is Gunnerston, um, plat amendment, um, right now it's got Gunnerston and Plat A. Gunnerston Dental down on three hundred south between Main and one hundred west, and we'll pull up the parcel map before we get to the conclusion of this one, this is a really simple one. Um, all they're proposing is to amend the plat, they're the only owners there, so they didn't have to go and collect a lot of signatures for people, which was nice, made it simple. And, okay. The reason for the change is to modify the, the boundaries of one of the pads, um, as well as combine. So, they have two smaller pads right now on the plat that they'd like to combine and create one larger pad, um, in order to allow a kind of building that they'd like to put on the west side of that development right there. Um, so, we'll show that once we, we get that up. Um, and then along with that, um, the public utility easements will be amended, so technically, that would be vacating part of the public utility easement and re-establishing a public utility easement, because they are changing. Um, that's just the way it works out in the code, so this would be an amendment to, or the proposal is amendment to the plat, and then a vacation of a public utility easement and the re-establishment of a public utility easement. Um, and staffs reviewed the plats, and everything checks out, and once we get it up, you can take a look, so. That is actually the, the entire item, so that's a really quick one, um, quicker than it takes to work technology, apparently, so.
Why are you waiting, I? Why are you waiting to have a question? Do they have plans right now for a building there, or they just, just make new changes?
Tricia, is, oh, hi.
Yeah.
Do you want to speak about what your plans are, or is it not, not quite there yet, or?
Um, it's, it's still in the planning processes, but, um, just the changes in dentistry and technology, we are bursting at the seams in our little building that we need to make a change. So, we're, we're getting, we're working with, um, planning on the equipment side and the building side. We don't have anything quite ready, but it will, it will tie in and mimic what the, the existing structure.
Yeah, and there is, I should mention, an existing development agreement about architectural standards, materials, that kind of thing, um, and that carries over, so that stays with the subdivision, so even within the new plat, Plat B, Plat C, Plat D, or whatever, that stays, um, on title, so any new development would have to adhere to that. So, um, like I said, I'm gonna walk through here real quick, so locator map, so, um, Main, one hundred west, three hundred south, um, the existing building, here's, uh, one, one pad and another pad, two smaller ones. There's a street view, so this is the area that's not developed. So, on Plat A, again, you have the, the two units, and then, uh, public utility easements throughout there. Um, so on Plat B, instead of two smaller ones, we have one larger one, and then everything in this common space is public utility easement, which works because they, they actually do have some lines running in these areas.
But what is the small building?
So, they do have.
I know the garage is there, but is that, is there a building there?
So, one pad has a garage, and the other pad doesn't have a, a garage or a storage unit, yeah?
Yes.
But that's.
We have to, it's okay, shake something.
Go for it.
Um, we, we have to, we live the float, so we've got to get a storage facility that can handle it, because it's got some unique size requirement, it does. So, I'm working on that right now, after I'm done with this meeting, if it all is finished, then my next step is that building, while I'm working on some of the stuff for the, the other.
For those who don't know, Gunnerston Dental has the big, two racks.
And so, that, that is all, so, um, because there is a vacation of a public utility easement, there's a public hearing required. Um, I don't know if there's anyone that would like to speak, but, um, the public hearing is required, and then, again, so the language, we have the request to amend subdivision Plat A, and create Plat B, um, and then vacate existing, um, public utility easements and establish new ones. And to approve it, as was listed in the staff report, um, there is some language in, in Utah code that needs to be met, as well as Payson City code, so, they just state simply, there's good cause, um, basically, there's no public interest or person that's materially injured, um, and of course, and Payson City code, it's that it meets its own requirements and advances the land use goals, or just all the goals of Payson City, so, um, that's the standard, so, that's the action that would be taken.
It knows when I have some neighbors?
Yes.
All right, uh, if that's everything, we would accept a motion to open public hearing. So, move.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, if anybody would like to speak about, on this, uh, proposal, come to the microphone, you have three minutes to speak. Okay, if there was no one, who will accept a motion to close public hearing? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes, any council discussion?
I, I did have a little question there, I'm looking at it, so are you gonna kind of try to hug the, the outside corner of it where the, the property is steep and put the parking up behind the building?
Parking's in this area.
I, I do appreciate, I, I love that corner, and I just, it's been a nice one for a long time, and I'm excited to see this move forward and have the, the big beautiful building there, which I'm sure you guys will, will do. Um, I, I have one of the Gunnersons in my woodshop class, and he's talked about it for a little while, and so, I wasn't surprised to see it. But it's good to see it moving forward, and I'm excited to have it there, so.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, I will accept a motion on this item.
I'll make a motion, that we, um, for the plat amendment, we approved the plat amendment for Gunnerston Plat A, and put in vacation of the public utility easement and the creation of Gunnerston while we vacate Plat A, and, and we, uh, creation of the Gunnerston Plat B and establishing of easement, so, uh, three hundred south and one hundred west.
I'll second that.
Okay, did we get everything? Okay, all in favor, any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes, congratulations. And tell Austin and Casey aye. Okay, next item. I remember two requests for RMO one, uh, two-story residential overlay zone located north of eleven thirty south and eleven hundred west Turfon Road.
Um, well, as it states right here, uh, today's request is only for approval of the overlay zone, not for the project itself, so this is about application of that overlay zone, uh, which we'll talk about in a second, so. Where we're looking at, right here, Utah County parcels, the ones listed, um, so there's existing wall property, and then, um, that's the, the area around it, as well as, um, three lots down here, and this is Walmart, for those of you who need orientation, um, and, let's see. So, with the approvals, the application of the RMO one is like a zone change, so, um, it, it provides a, a tool in addition to, um, the, uh, the tools provided. So it provides a tool in addition to the tools provided in the base zone, in the R1 zone. So again, legislative action, and today we'd be looking at the density, the layout, the design, and the housing product. And any kind of development that would need to be consistent with what's approved today. So we're looking at a concept plan and any preliminary and final plan that's brought back in future would need to be consistent with that concept plan and product that's consistent with what's in that plan. So that technical side, that preliminary plan, the final plat, with the engineering and more specifics would come at a later time with that approval. The RMO 1, it's an infill tool to allow better use of land in infill areas, so in the heart of the city where there's restrictions on where roads already are and the size of lots. It allows for a mix of single-family homes and duplexes or twin homes with a density that's 60% per unit of the requirements in the zone. And it has a strict architectural requirement. So that's not just this project specific, that's in the RMO 1 zone. So that has requirements with the orientation of the building and architectural features and where garage is to be located and some of the other architectural design standards there. Also has common space requirements, especially as that common space relates to the architectural standards and vice versa. And then it also allows for an alternative street cross-section, which we'll see because the road does pinch and become a little narrower here. Again, that's because this is an infill area where if we had to meet all of the rigid standards of zones, we wouldn't be able to fit our standard lots with standard roadways. So here's a conceptual layout. Again, this is a concept plan, but anything that would be built would need to be consistent with the concept plan here. So you can see the roadways, they do pinch. We have this single-family dwelling right here, the existing dwelling. And then six new single-family dwellings and 12 twin-home structures. So that's 24 units that are part of twin homes, six that are single, for a total of 30 new units. And then the one existing. And then there's some open space, predominantly in this area right here that become like a community park. And also, I should...
The community park is, is that a Payson City park or is that a...
It is part of the development, but it would be open.
So does this establish an HOA?
It doesn't necessarily establish an HOA, but that's the way that this would get built, yes. So in order to make sure everything's maintained, there'd be an HOA. Now, the streets aren't going to be dedicated to the city, so it's not HOA maintained, but this park would be HOA maintained.
Okay, I'm okay with that. I don't like the street. I see HOAs fall apart all the time. Is there a reason we have to pinch those roads? Why can't, if we eliminated one home, we could widen it out both ways, move 15, 16, 17, 18, shift them, and leave those roads just a touch wider? And I know it's a 30-foot wide road. It's not like it's pinched down super tight.
Right.
But I just, I don't know, down there by 14 kind of has me a little concerned. It kind of causes a blind spot behind that corner.
Same down, wait, oh, on 14 right here?
Yeah.
Well, the idea of pinching it is it is traffic calming. So you shouldn't have vehicles speeding through here. We would have vehicles speeding through here that were kept wide. And so to create this pedestrian feel where we have the big porches and we have...
What's our standard width on residential area now? I know we voted on it, but I can't remember.
Oh, Travis, the standard width of a residential street now?
Forty.
Forty, right?
But we allow the 30 in these infill projects.
So, and again, with this infill project, you have the alley loaded. So we'll have, you know, more cars coming back on this side. These are all front-oriented, so the hope, our idea here, and what we see with similar projects built in Springfield, Mapleton, is these are more pedestrian-oriented, or frontyard-oriented homes. And so we have more people in this area walking around and so that traffic calming helps facilitate that and makes it safer.
I see the logic to that, but I also see that with the front-loading model that you have there, any visitors that come in are going to park in the front, which is going to narrow each up, up each side eight feet.
Yeah, which would slow down even more.
Yeah, but it also provides those blind spots.
Right.
I'm kind of, I don't know if it's a different overlay. I know we're not approving this plan right now, but I know that the overlay, the way you're discussing it, will give them the rights to do it that way. I personally would rather see them kept up, just to the corner.
See, you could do like a no parking zone across the street from 13 and 12 and 11.
Yeah, and definitely...
Because that's where the blind corners are.
But if you just widen that out to 10 feet down, that's where I'm looking at it.
Yeah, that tends to, that's directly correlated to speed of traffic. So if you widen it, cars speed up.
Right, but I'm not saying it necessarily needs to be widened. One passes that intersection, and if an intersection is a good transition, maybe. I don't know if I am wrong, but that's my input. But I'll let you go ahead and finish your discussion now.
Yeah, I agree. Go on to this slide pretty well.
While you're on that slide, I know there was some discussion about the cul-de-sac.
We'll get to it.
Okay.
Any other comments on this slide? Okay, so some project details, some cross-sections we've discussed. Yeah, so the connectivity, we worked with the applicant to make sure that this was lined up so we didn't have it offset. So that's why these ones are offset, that staff felt like it would be better to have this as a four-way. Then, let's see, I think we've discussed most of these. The design here, again, is to have good connectivity, that this is a walkable community and a well-connected community.
Is the other piece of property to the east of 1130 West, is it projected that it will be developed in the same manner?
Oh, this one over here?
Or, yeah.
Yeah, some questions, so...
Because as it stands right now, I mean, you're, there's no exits out. You're going to end up, those little roads are going to end up at cul-de-sac in there.
So these are stubbed in a way that this road and this road would be continued. And the idea is that it would come down and connect here. So this would create kind of a grid-like pattern. On the north side, we do have an I-1, so an industrial, it's a, what's that, Payson Fruit Growers? And that takes up, you know, walls it off on this side. And then there's existing homes over here that wall it off on that side. So there's not a lot of potential to really turn this into an open grid, which is why it's an infill project. But the idea is that this would continue, this would continue, and it would continue through here. So we wouldn't need cul-de-sacs and we could make it so really anywhere in this neighborhood you can walk or go out to within it, you don't have to go all the way around.
Yeah. What about with density and cul-de-sac?
Yeah, so then with project density, it meets the requirements of the zone. So if we exclude the roads and we exclude the wall lot, which we don't need to calculate that way, that's the most restrictive calculation, I suppose, maybe 5,400 square feet per unit. The way the code reads, it's excluding, well, let's see, where would it be? Eight point, oh, now I'm confused, excluding roads and walls, 8.1 acres per acre. Well, in any way, and those all in the staff report. So the density is greater than the amount required by the zone. I think that slide throws it off a little bit. So with cul-de-sacs, staff discussed this at great length and this was discussed a lot at the Planning Commission. And the Planning Commission minutes from the public hearing in the first meeting and in the second meeting, it wasn't a public hearing, but they did open it up, a public comment. And then tonight, we don't need to have, or we're not required to have a public hearing. Not required public hearings aren't even held. And the minutes from both the public hearing and the public comment were in the staff, or were in the package, I should say, to the city council. And in both those meetings, we discussed the cul-de-sac, especially in that second meeting. The position of staff here from all departments, I'm going to kind of aggregate them onto one slide. The concerns with cul-de-sacs just in general. They're more expensive to maintain because of their size. With snow removal and garbage collection, they can create some difficulty or inefficiency. The fire turnarounds, fire department has concerns because often they have trucks and with trucks and trailers, it can make fire turnaround a little bit more difficult. With utility costs, when utilities don't go through like this and they come and they dead-end and utility service has to come all the way around, that reduces the efficiency of utilities, increases the cost. The lack of connectivity, there's concerns with its impact on traffic as all of these residents would need to come out and go around at these other intersections rather than go within the...
Go through my road.
Within, oh, city's road, go within the community. Lack of connectivity impacts the response time of emergency vehicles. So there's some concern there. And then with neighborhood unity and pedestrianism. And then with walling off, if there were to be like a fence here and wall it off, then we lack visibility and that's very tucked away. So those are some of the concerns that were brought up by staff, with cul-de-sacs in general and with these, or this cul-de-sac here. So here's a, here's a street view of the cul-de-sac. The property lines just passed here by a handful of feet. I don't know, the shortest distance.
Mine goes right to the fire hydrant, right there. You see any trailers in there? There ain't no trailer block of the road.
All right, so, well, not right now. So on this side, we have, yeah, so this property line goes to the middle, this property line goes to the middle. And I'm not sure that exact distance back, but you can see there is some land right there that's privately owned.
Have they thought about buying that?
There has been some discussion of that and that's the route, that's the preferred route to go is...
I just think that there's too much housing coming out of one place.
Thank you.
What do you mean?
So if you don't go through, like everything's coming out one place.
Right.
And I think that road right there, I mean, I guess they're going to have to make it wider on the one side, right?
So...
Make it shorter.
So they're pinching it right here, which would give some of that land back to these property owners. Well, not back, but it would take it from city right-of-way to private property and then it would convert some private property to right-of-way. So I'm not sure with the trade-off, if it's a net gain or net loss for those individual property owners, but that would need to be worked out with them and the city. And Teresa, or council member, hi. To your point, that is one of the concerns why staff prefers the connectivity. So we can disperse the impact.
With the stop light right there.
So with the housing product, housing product's consistent with the RMO 1 overlay. The front porches, the architectural features, so we can see the roof pitches and the windows and materials. And we can see that as we go through here. These are some examples from a similar project up in Mapleton. So this one represents a twin home. The idea is that it doesn't stand out like a typical duplex. It fits in with a single-family home environment. So the existing neighborhood right now has a mix of some duplexes. It's a predominantly single-family detached home. So we obviously have a heritage village, so a newer development here on the south side is 55-plus. And then you can see with the existing development, we have some mix of materials with some brick and stucco and whatnot, and single-story and two-story dwelling.
That top left one wouldn't be allowed though, the new RMO 1 because the garage sticks out?
Right.
Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. So the design standards are a little bit different. These would, you know, don't quite meet the RMO 1. But in terms of just being consistent with the neighborhood, we feel like the RMO 1 is consistent for, yeah, it isn't conflict with the neighborhood. And the density provides subtle transition from the commercial areas, Walhalla and these other commercial areas, to more single-family detached further south east. So again, today, council's decision, it's the overlay zone, so not project plan approval. That comes at a later date. Planning Commission had the public hearing and recommended approval with council decision coming tonight. And the recommendation would be to either approve with the findings or if there's any modification amendment that needs to occur and then of course deny or remand back to the staff. Any questions?
Yeah, just on the road going to the cul-de-sac. Can it be done without the road going through the cul-de-sac?
It would require modification to the layout itself. I guess, first of all, all departments of staff, I believe it's, I can say all departments, but at least many departments of staff would like to see it go through. That's the preference of staff. If it weren't to go through and the cul-de-sac were to remain, then the density would need a change. With the fire department, there's a maximum of 10 units on one point of egress. And right now, this project exceeds that. And so this secondary access allows...
It gives a third access, right?
Well, for right now, it's just this one and this two.
So they're not going to come out?
So there's this access and this access, so all of these, well, yeah, so all of these, if this access didn't go through, would have to come out of this one.
That's a lot of people coming out.
Now, these units have two. So there would need to be some modifications to the concept plan if the conversion of the cul-de-sac to a through-street is not approved.
So the applicant's here, right, Jerry? How has your negotiation gone with buying the property? The two property owners that would take this street through to this cul-de-sac?
Never heard one thing about it.
Hi, my name is Jerry Robinson. We have had no negotiations because it was not our idea. Our original design was to have a stub street there, but the public works wanted the connectivity. So any negotiations, as I understand it, bandwidth?
Public safety.
Yeah, we're somewhat neutral. And in fact, there are some advantages to us because it's easier to sell homes on dead-end streets and there's less road for us to build and less conversion to the cul-de-sac. But we support whatever the council decides. And we've been, we do it this way because the public works ask us to draw it for connectivity, safety, et cetera, et cetera. Including looped water systems and all the other looped systems. So there's alternative ways to get in and out.
So a couple more questions. I like the design, I like the layout, and I can see the advantages going through the cul-de-sac. There's lots of reason to do that. So what would be the process, Dave, if the two owners of that property do not want to sell to somebody?
If the, if you can't negotiate something and the city needs that road to go through, then you have to start a condemnation process.
Okay. I don't know where we are in that property. I do have a challenge to think, have to think through this condemning property. That's just something I, as a city, I don't like to do because it's just property rights now.
Can we see where the property loss would be? Like where do the laws go here that we would be negotiating? Or that would possibly...
I don't have, we don't have any survey of that, the exact numbers.
You go back to that big drill to where it was at.
This old lab property owner, that property owner. And theoretically, they each own to approximately the center.
About the middle of the cul-de-sac.
Any action would involve both property?
Yeah, I'll... Hey, Mark.
Okay, I own right to that fire hydrant. I put a basketball hoop to my kids right there. That's where I own.
Yeah.
And you're going to rip out my business and ball for my kids.
But it would involve both property owners. I've worked through a couple of procedures like that and usually it comes down to figuring out what the price of that property is to extend straight through. Because I developed, so there aren't any structures that we're buying out or getting rid of in both sides.
The concrete.
Yeah, so you said, for this area right here, there's no structures. These owners would be receiving some land. Again, this is approximate, not to scale. As you saw on the other one, this kind of curved as it pinched in. I just drew these straight just to give an idea. So it's this land over here that would have to go through the condemnation process, but then I don't know how that process would be affected when the owners would be also receiving land. And either the developer or the city would be responsible to... And either the developer or the city would be responsible to go in and change the curb gutter sidewalk and their front yards then to be extended, so.
What's more to part?
So like, I think that this, this particular portion of it can be discussed later. We can approve it for the way that it is. And if it doesn't pan out that we can get that road through there, then the other, the way they originally laid it out still fits in that RMO one overlay zone, correct?
I, I can't answer because I don't know the, the issues that the public works and public safety have if it doesn't go in.
Well, I, I'm just, I know we're not here to approve these plans, we're just here to approve the.
Overlay.
Overlay, the zone change.
Right.
So I think we're kind of getting sidetracked a little bit. It needs to be come, come back. I think that's a discussion that needs to be opened and.
So the overlay is not an approval of cul-de-sac.
Cul-de-sac disposal. So I just, I just wanna make that known, that that's not what we're about here. We're approving it to move it forward. Those discussions can be made, offers can be looked at, and see if that's something that we can make work out.
Yeah, so the condemnation process, well, I mean, first, the negotiation process we go through before condemnation. But the, those processes are separate. The conceptual layout, we, we would want to put something, I think, in, in the motion that we're recognizing that if it doesn't work out with the cul-de-sac or with that condemnation process, that the conceptual layout would need to be modified. And density may need to be modified and turnarounds may need to be, you know, there, there would be some modifications to this layout if this didn't go through. And so I would want a scenario where if we say, we can, we can do this, but we're not sure about this, and then this ends up staying, and then all of a sudden, we have a scenario where we, we approve the density that doesn't actually work. So we could probably just put that in the.
Do you know where the density is coming from though? I just need to speak. Because they took, they took feet out of the park to make the density work. That park don't have nothing to do with the houses. They took density out of Wallace Park to make it work.
Can we, so this is not a public hearing?
I know, but.
It's not a public hearing. If you, if you want to come and make one comment for, it looks like you're the only one here from the neighborhood. I'll give you two minutes to come and, and say whatever you want, but you need to come to the microphone. And that's, that's all that I'll give you.
Well, I need it because every one of you guys that has been here.
I understand that.
I've been there.
So what, we did read all of them.
I mean, I'm Kenny Ellsworth, I live in that house in the cul-de-sac. They said, just to make this stuff work, they took footage out of the park to make the houses work. So, and that just screws me over. I lived in this, this is my dream. That's why I bought here. I've lived there for, since ninety-eight. That's why I bought this, bought a cul-de-sac. You know, I'm just saying, they, how can you take area from a park to make the houses work? And in the fireplace, they said, they only need an in-and-out, in-and-out access. You know what they can do? Rip out a house on the other side when they do the other development? But no, it's, it's okay to build a turnaround cul-de-sac on that site that hasn't been developed yet. I'm just saying, it's asinine. You know, we've never had an accident in our neighborhood once in our whole nineteen years being there. And you say it's dangerous in the cul-de-sac? It's not. That's why I bought there. You know, we've, I'm just, it's just, I mean, it's just for you guys. It's not for the people that own there. City wants more money just to put a couple extra houses in there. So it's, you know, I'm just, it's why I bought here. You know, everything went up this month. What are we paying for now? Everything went up. I've worked three jobs just to live there. So it's, it sucks, but it's.
Well, I think we're, we're trying to figure out how to make it work, and we're taking into consideration your feelings and, and we're just, we're looking at moving forward to, to progress. And like I said, I had asked if we turn that and make it come down that direction. And I do believe the other direction coming out is, is another road that goes out behind those houses. It'll turn and come out. So there's two forms of egress there, but we're looking at the whole picture when we do that.
Another question I got, that street right there where all them houses are. You got twenty-two, twenty-two cars that's gonna come out of that park, that, that one little small road. Everybody has two cars. So you figure from thirteen to nine to eight to three, everybody's gonna have two cars. There's twenty-two cars that's gonna come out of that little teeny road. So how's that gonna work? It's, that's good.
Thank you. I, I do think, from my perspective, we're not just looking at six houses, we're looking at the entire development. And you're gonna push them all over. So if you worry about the cars, you're gonna push all of them over to your neighbor's one street over, and they're getting the extra plus the ones that, it's just part of the conversation, right? So you're, you're pushing them all over to your.
But what's everyone gonna do when they go to Walmart? They're gonna come to my road, go straight across. You're gonna put a light now at my end of my road to go right across to Walmart.
Well, and, and to go to what Councilman Chris should send us, that discussion we were having earlier, that's one of the reasons why we wanted to pinch the roads as staff. Because we didn't want this to be a through area. We wanted this to be through for very localized traffic, but not a corner cutting for people coming from Walmart. You come down Walmart, you see those roads pinch, they kind of, you know, that first road veers north slightly, it pinches, it's narrow. The idea is if we kept it wide, we, we could see some of that traffic that the gentleman's mentioning. And that's one of the key reasons we wanted to pinch it.
Yeah, I can see pinching, and I don't see, there's no place to go. And if you come from Walmart, there's really no place to go unless you live there. You wouldn't want to go through a little subdivision.
Yeah, you would actually.
Yeah, you stay on the collector roads. The applicant, by the way, he's here, you haven't come up to answer a question. He would like to.
Yes, please.
In general, if you would like to have this.
Yes. Jerry Robinson again. Thank you for letting me speak. I'll, I'll be brief. By the way, I just wanna make one thing clear. This was brought up by our neighbor. He's talking about extending the road over here. I don't know why anybody in their right mind would extend a future road over there. Any future road is gonna come down there. I mean, it's, it's, that house will stay. Let me just back up. We, we had carried a notice to everyone's home. And the gentleman that spoke said he didn't get the notice. I don't know how that would happen because we took one around to everyone within five hundred feet, including all the people in Heritage Village. We held, we held two separate meetings. Twelve people came from Heritage Village, fifteen people came from this area. And the, we have a petition that I have with me that has fourteen signatures on it in favor of the project. And I don't know how many times you have petitions in favor of anything, but it's difficult to get a petition in favor of any change in the neighborhood. Even good changes, because if you put a city park here, somebody would probably oppose that. So in the hearing, several people spoke in favor. Mr. Wall did, Mr. Hanson did, who is not a part of this. And the gentleman that lives right here spoke in favor of it. One of, one of his concerns specifically was that this is an industrial area. This is generally a commercial area. And usually, when cities have areas near industrial, commercial, they tend to go higher density. Tend to be townhomes or apartments. This is a great alternative that's not townhomes or apartments. And let me just, I'm almost done here. The, we made a point of putting more of the single-family homes next to single-family. Couldn't do it everywhere. This is a park area. It was originally not a park area. It was Mr. Hanson, or Mr. Wall's land. He gave it up to be a park area. So in order to make the homes work, he had just last week to give up another two thousand square feet to get the numbers to work. So we didn't take any park away. This is not a park now. If you drive over there tonight, you won't see a park. There's no park that we took. We're creating a park. Same architectural standards would apply, garages set back, especially along here. Notice there, there are no driveways, no concrete. You drive there, it's attractive. Same thing along there. Expect this to be an attractive front. We mentioned we aligned the roads to meet city standards here, to make this a simple intersection. Just to reiterate, this is a large collector streak running around there. I don't know why anybody in their right mind would turn here for a shortcut to go up there to get to Walmart when they can make one turn to go there. So I've observed that any change, no matter good or bad, will create somebody in opposition. And so I think, I hope you see this as a positive alternative. Certainly a better alternative than apartments or townhomes next to this industrial site, packing plant there. And regardless of what we compare it to, I expect it to be a beautiful community. You've seen the pictures of the homes. And the RMO zone, I wanna emphasize, has written standards that require all of the things we talked about, the garage is set back, porches, the classier look of, of the designs. So, thank you.
Do we have any more council discussion or a motion?
If I might just clarify, we kind of left that in discussion. We, as last resort confirmation would be there. We don't anticipate that we're a partner in this, if you will. We, we are looking for certain things, but negotiation is how this comes about, not through the first step is being condemnation. So it was in answer to a question, how do we, how do we do that, that brought the orders there. Usually that's worked out with negotiations. This is a concept that the developer put together, and it, it has impacted in that manner. But we're not necessarily putting forward the fact that condemnation is an essential part of negotiations and working those type of things out are part of this whole conceptual process. I just wanted to make sure that our first step forward.
Well, I agree. I'm with Councilman Gillett. I'm not a real fan of condemnation.
So I just got the comments. We've seen a couple of projects that Jerry's put together. I think he does a really good job of putting some nice product together. I hope we start seeing these being finished, and I think this is the third one now, isn't it, Jill? So I like what he does. I like the, I like the layout and everything, and just, I'm just had a little bit of concern about the, the private property, so.
Any other comments? Alright, do you have a motion?
So I'll make a motion that we approve the RFO one overlay zone for the two-family residential overlay zone located eleven thirty south and eleven fifty, or eleven hundred west on Turf Farm Road with, approved with findings. And also that if there is a challenge with the, getting the right-of-way to the cul-de-sac, that we, there might be modifications to the density and to the site plan.
So did I cover it? When you say with findings, is that findings in the staff report?
Staff finding, written or staff report.
Did that cover it? I believe so. Turn me a second. Not yet.
So I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Do you have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Springside Meadows, Plant E, residential dwelling, design and materials.
Alright. So Springside Meadows, are we all familiar with Springside Meadows?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Down in the south side of town. Springside Meadows was owned by Salisbury. Yeah, they're in Salisbury Homes. And they've recently, recently been purchased or in the process of being purchased. I'm not sure where you're at on that. I don't want to present that. One of the two, by D.R. Horton. And naturally, D.R. Horton likes to build their product instead of Salisbury's product. Similar, but a little bit different. So with Salisbury product, we have the stucco and the stone and brick, and there's, there's not an exact percentage, but we're seeing roughly twenty to twenty-five percent going through their, their sample product. So here's two simple examples. You can see this one's less than the twenty-five. That one's probably more about twenty-five percent to the front elevation, maybe higher than twenty-five percent. And with the D.R. Horton, what they're seeing, or what they say that they're seeing, what their clients want, is a product that's a little bit different than this. Still pretty similar, but you'll see the exterior materials have changed some. So their product here has the, some of the LP siding. They have three main different product types, and I guess we'll get to that. So here's some examples of just general elevations that, that show their use of product. So we see, it doesn't have the necessarily, I should say, it doesn't necessarily have the twenty to twenty-five percent berker stone. Some of them still have some, some berker stone, as we walk through here. And so with what they're asking today, it was a council decision for Platte E with the design standards, and it would be to amend those design standards to include this D.R. Horton product. So in these examples here, you see this product called the Taylor and Jefferson. We have, I don't wanna get this wrong because that's small writing, but we have what they call a traditional, so that's the stucco with the berker stone. Then we have a Craftsman and a farmhouse product. So you can see the materials, change of floor plans are the same. It's just that the material, the roof lines, cables, some of the window treatments and whatnot will change from product to product. So here's, yeah, the Taylor, Jefferson, Carter, and Kimball. So you can see the Rambler and, and whatnot. And the eight that they're building are those ones we just went through. So the Taylor, the Jefferson, or we like to build Carter, Kimball. Three different options for housing type. So the Nevo, Jefferson, Carter, Taylor, Croatia, Topaz, Kimball, and Lincoln. So I don't know if you'd like D.R. Horton, Representative D.R. Horton to come up and talk a little bit about the product. But what's requested today was put in the agenda is for Platte E. And then there are future phases coming, and we'll discuss those design standards as those phases come. But Platte E has already been approved, so this would be amendment, an amendment to the, those design standards. So do you have any questions about that?
How many houses are they looking to build in Platte E?
In Platte E?
This one right by the school, isn't it? No, that across the street.
South, south and west.
South. Yeah, okay, maybe.
Twenty-four houses?
Yeah, I mean, best to answer the question. He could probably tell you what's been.
Is this, is this a similar product you're looking at for the other phases as well?
Oh, yeah. So we did have a field trip. We have a couple of planning commission members, the mayor, city manager Dave. The, the thoughts from those who attended was, I, I think most people liked the product. It's a good product. I think it would fit well within that neighborhood. I don't know if you had any concerns, David, with it. I don't want to speak for you since you're sitting right here.
No, I didn't have any concerns, but as you look at that subdivision we looked at in Mapleton, it seemed like ninety percent of them were the, there were only very few of them traditional, with the bricks and stuff on there. And most, it looks like most of it the manager put the other kind of.
Is that, is that more economical for the person buying it?
No, actually, the stucco ones are a little bit cheaper. No, the ones in Mapleton, those homes are a little bit larger than the ones being built in Springside Meadows, so we see a lot of three garage, but we're only doing two garages for the most part. And here in Payson, so it will be a little bit different just in terms of the size, but the materials are consistent with this. This one?
It's like it needs something.
And that was part of the discussion that staff had. We typically see that we have some sort of treatment.
Color variation or something?
Yeah. And some of theirs have more color variation.
See, that's got like a nice color variation.
Uh-huh, like these ones do. Down in Mapleton, we're seeing that most of them have the variation, but we did see a couple that didn't. And when I asked about it, they said that's what their client preferred.
Are they spec homes or they, are they spec homes or they built, pretty seldom been built?
They're most respect. I'd love to.
If you'd like to make.
It'll come work. Yeah, come on in.
Yeah, please.
Do I need a, um, back to the first one? Good evening. Adam Wilson with D.R. Horton. It's good to be with you. So, we're excited to be in South County. We haven't been here to date, but we're making a pretty decent splash. Rick's been kind enough to sell us some finished lots here in Springside. Yeah, Rick and Kind usually aren't in San Antonio.
Except.
We're in San.
D.R. Horton's the largest, largest home builder in America. This year we'll build around 56,000 homes. We have a $16 billion market cap. Our local team here has been here since 1992. I've been with D.R. Horton for about three years, but our division president's been with them for 18. And he's a Provo, Tim View grad and I live with my family and six kids in North Utah County and love it. So, I've been doing, I'm the vice president of land acquisition. And as we come down here and do a survey, we thought we've got under contract a few hundred homes in Santaquin in the Foothill area, so on the east side. Over in Summit Ridge, we've got another few hundred lots and then here in Springside, you know, we've got a pretty good runway here. So, we hope to have a presence here for a long time. Talking specifically about these elevations, it's been interesting. Most cities require us to do a variation of this type, where traditional's been something we've been building for the last 20 years. We're kind of phasing out of it. We still have some sprinkle in our communities, but it's like, like was mentioned, we've got, oh, 80% of our homes over the last year are of the farmhouse, which is what you see here with the vertical lap siding and wood beams, that's kind of a farmhouse look, or the Craftsman, which are these two here. So, you've got, you can see the tapered columns that go down to more of a block and you have some of the shingle siding treatment up on the top. But both of these are 100% cementaceous fiberboard, 50-year warranty, great product, right? You don't have the issues with stucco, maybe you have on some of the dry rock. But, but they look good. And the interesting thing is that we, we sell our traditional as kind of a low-cost leader and if you want one of these different elevations, they cost more for us and so the buyer pays a little more. But to step up to the Craftsman, it's $3,000. To step up to the farmhouse, it's another $3,000 on top of that. And so, if the market is dictating that the buyer can pay more for that because they like the look, they want it as an upgrade versus the traditional, we would really like to sell what the market wants. When we came into Springside, we closed late June and we opened for sale the first weekend in July. Our first four sales, three of them were a farmhouse and one of them was a Craftsman. And then our model was also a farmhouse. So, we submitted those, those plans early on and got back the comments, well, based on the review from council approvals, you still need to do the stucco with the rock. And so, we went back to the buyers and they all walked away. We think we converted one of them over. But we would love to build this product, we think, especially the farmhouse, it's wildly popular and we, and we have it in multiple colors, but really this, this white and black farmhouse is one of our top sellers in our communities and it does really well. So, thus the request for us to come tonight, we'd actually like to amend the development agreement on Platte E even, the 31 lots which we've already closed, on interactively building it. We'd love to be able to sprinkle these in there as well, but then for sure going forward in our other, our other future Plattes. So, that's our request. We're happy to be here and excited to be in Payson.
Because I think it's a, I think it's great that you're trying to, so everything doesn't look the same. I don't have a problem with that. I just didn't like that one, but the rest of them I like.
Sure.
What about, do the buyers get to pick what color they want, don't they?
And so, back to Councilman Christensen, we spec a lot of these and so, we kind of pride ourselves on being, have great designers in-house. We have a full house cap team. We're about 100-ish employees and in this market, along the Wasatch Front, this year we'll build around 750 homes. So, we're right up there with Ivory and Hedge as far as the top three. But we build a lot of specs. It's like you go to a Toyota dealership and you want a Camry, right? Well, there's 10 Camrys on the lot. Nobody's going to custom order a Camry, you know, in today's market. So, you come in and you pick one of the elevations that we've already got spec and built because you want to move into your house in three weeks. You don't want to wait six months. And so, we have the capital to be able to spec the inventory, but most of the time buyers are coming in and choosing cabinet finishes or flooring or even paint color because that's how far down the road we are. So, we have an even flow production and we can sell five to six homes a month and for the last two months, we sold 10 in Springside. So, we're right at that pace at five or so a month.
I just worry about, oh, all of them being the same color.
Sure. So, we still.
We've got that effect going up and it's in Elk Ridge. I, with the, no, not the woody, gray. Everything's gray or light gray. It, not, yeah, not Edge. Arrive, with Arrive.
So, I still think we work with the planning staff on, you can't build the same elevation every third, right? You've got to have some variation in there. And frankly, if we're going to be here and build 500 homes, we don't want them to look all the same either, right? We want the variation. We want the community to look good and feel good because as buyers drive through our streets, they say, oh, these are all the same. I don't want to live in a monolithic unit, right?
I have a couple of questions for you. One is, I know these are not high-end homes and it's usually what you get in parade homes. Have you thought about doing a parade home for next year in this?
We certainly could, yeah, either down here or maybe even in Foothill. We would like one here in South County to help draw some of that traffic down here, but we're not afraid to do a small, this was a parade home in Legacy Farms out in Saratoga Springs. And so, it's, this is a very simple design. You could probably get away with this on one of our corner lots in Springside, certainly in the other phase where they're a little bigger, we've got a little more width for that third car garage, but we've done small, small.
It'd be nice to have a parade home down there. We've had a few, but just to bring people down there to.
Yeah.
The other thing I have is just, it looks like you're buying everything Salisbury's if you're buying the two at Santaquin then too, so.
Yeah. I think Rick's got some different business strategies going forward and may want to get out of the building side of it.
Well, I'm way excited to see single-family homes. Doug and I had this conversation today that I felt like we were way lopsided and everything was headed downtown, houses, multi-homes, and so I'm really excited to see it. I don't know, I, as a question to staff on that D, he was talking about Platte D, would it be beneficial to us to try to transition that and maybe start to sprinkle it in there a little bit? Is it, I don't know the whole layout, would it, would it look better to give him to go ahead and make some of those this way and start to create? And I'll disclose right now, I am not a fan of stucco, never happened. I was raised by a brick mason.
Stuck on vinyl fence.
You know, yeah, I don't like vinyl fences either. Throw up a good wood fence with a brick home and I'm, I'm a happy camper. So, that's the disclosure, that's my disclaimer right there. So, I, yeah, if we can keep more of those stucco houses out, I'm game, so. But I don't know if that fits in this category or if that's something to have to come back in two weeks to look at.
Daniel, I don't think we do something that's not on the agenda, right?
As in wood fences? That sounds weird though.
Doing that.
He's sending us to Platte D.
Platte D, since it's not on the agenda.
Uh, no, so Platte D is not on the agenda. We did want to see how council responded to amending Platte D and how, what do you think of the material? For Platte D, there, there were meetings where we had members of the publicans from that neighborhood, so the staff would want to notify the neighborhood of the potential change and we would need to go through and amend that agreement for Platte D. So, we can notice that for a future meeting. We would just need time to notice the neighborhood so they're aware. We don't, we don't want to blindside it since for some of those members, that was important to them. I don't know if those members are still there, still have those same concerns or if they feel different once they've seen D.R. Horton product. I don't know.
And I'm not, I'm not speaking for the whole council when I say a green light and go ahead with that, but that would be D.R. Horton's push if that's what they want to do and bring it to us and if he decides.
Neighborhoods are fair game, I'm true game.
Am I totally okay with that more?
Yeah. I will give it them and if they would like to move on Platte D.
Are these plans the same plan? Did you buy the plans from Salisbury? Or are these your own new floor plans?
No, these are our own floor plans. They're all designed in-house. And I think in Springside right now, we've got eight different plan offerings and then each of those would have the three elevations, so you've got kind of 24 options.
And those houses, I mean, I can see that they're the same floor plan because the windows line up where they're supposed to, but they look, they look very different and I appreciate that.
Yeah, you get different roof pitches.
We have some subdivisions where it's 200 homes are identical, they flip back and forth.
What's the square foot you got on most of these homes?
Uh.
They have basement upgrade.
Yeah, yeah. A lot of basements. 2,000 above grade, 1,000 below, so between 3 and 3,500.
Oh, that's a good size.
Yeah, reading the garage.
Yeah, I've got the, again, these show a three-car garage option, but most of those won't fit on the plans we've got. So, when we opened up the Carter, you know, the farmhouse Carter was going for 316. What was the other one? The Kimball farmhouse was going for 290, so pretty reasonable.
I think they're beautiful. I'm, we're glad that you're here, we're glad that you're building, look forward to working with you from my perspective.
And I apologize that we didn't make it to your tour, we have day jobs, so.
All right. We just managed to marry all the cooks.
Oh, that was.
You're welcome, you're welcome to come out to Mapleton Grove, our, our community over, right on the border of Santaquin and Mapleton on Slant Road. We've got about 200 lots there that we're building. 90% of them are farmhouses or Craftsman.
Do you have his address?
Uh, we can get that for you from the staff.
He's in my phone.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments from council, any other discussion? Okay, do we have a motion?
I move that we accept the changes in the residential dwelling design and materials at Springside Meadows, Platte E. Is that everything? Do you need any?
Why don't we, something like to include D.R. Horton product and materials presented or something to tie it to the discussion.
So, it's to include the D.R. Horton products and materials represented, which you guys went and saw at, I wish I would have made it on the field trip. Yeah, with all those things. The Nevo, the Carter, Taylor, Croatia, Topaz, Kimball and Lincoln. Consistent with the neighborhood and subdivision.
Okay.
And we approve it.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Did you get that?
Thank you. I was a little confused. I was driving in the neighborhood and it kept saying D.R. Horton. I'd be saying. Have you approved a D.R. Horton building too? Okay, resolution, amendment to the development agreement for the apartments at the depot.
This is a proposed amendment to the development agreement we have with Eversage, which is the depot development out there. As you know, we did go to court with SESD and the court ruled that we had the right to service that development. There are some issues with the poles in the road and so, the developer to not be held up with their occupancy and stuff, wanted to make some changes so that that wouldn't hold up their development. And so, they proposed this. We were comfortable, they initially had a hold harmless agreement in there and we told them we didn't want that in there, they took that out, but it's just allowing them to be able to move forward even though that's not resolved in the road. Now, having said that, we just received an email from our attorney saying that they are concerned we were planning on paving tomorrow and they may try to stop it and take us into court again. So, I sent an email chain that I've had with SESD and, you know, we offered that they could put the line and the conduit underneath the road and put their meters on, they didn't want to do that. I asked if we could move them to the west side of the road and just keep it overhead until further development, they didn't want to accept that. They're, they're saying that we need to put underground lines into each one of those homes and I don't think they require that in any other part of the county. They might require that in Elk Ridge and Woodland Hills.
When they say each home, are they talking about each unit or?
No, the four homes, the four homes on the other side.
And there's, yeah.
So, I just sent the email chain to the attorneys and said, you know, here's what we tried to negotiate with them and, but anyway, that doesn't have, I'm just giving you an update, but here's, this is the development agreement, an amendment that we were putting so that they can continue to move forward. I think they're getting close to having occupancy of that first building and.
Yeah, because they had kind of dug up past the road today when I drove by.
Yeah, they, they initially just wanted to pave that part and our streets department said no. All the trucks and stuff that were in there has caused so much damage to that road, so Kent went in and negotiated with them, but, you know, we'll pave part of that, but we just need to redo the road. We shouldn't just do part of it because it'll continue to break up. So, I think Kent has been working with them, they were going to get the whole road prepared and then repave it. We were going to leave a, kind of a two-foot strip from, from the power pole to the curb so that if we ever get it resolved, then we can pull those poles out and then just patch those little sections instead of having to.
So, what would it cost us to take across the street?
I might have to defer to Ron. I mean, if we, if we put it across the street, which we offered to do to put the poles on the, on the.
But they want it to go under.
They want everything to go underground, which is pretty expensive and.
For the four houses?
Yeah. And, and our feeling was there's going to be further development and they'll probably be annexed in, maybe the ones there maybe don't want to, but as that growth comes, so we offered to move them on the west side, but just keep it overhead until there's further development. They would accept that. So, I don't know if they stop the development or the paving and go back into court, maybe the court tells us we have to put it underground if so goes.
So, what are the grounds they're looking to stop the development on? What are the grounds that they're?
That'll cause damage to their lines if it's.
If we take the move around it.
Thank you. It's true.
I would, I would cut panel if we moved.
Well, and right, right now, I wasn't at the court hearing, so Mark might have, but I understood that the judge didn't tell us to do anything with those.
Yes. We went down through, this is temporary restraining order from, from various things that were happening out there. Bottom line is, is the poles in the street were not addressed. Their attorney acted stuff, he said, before you leave, and the judge was embarrassed, he was, he'd gone over 30 minutes and he had another hearing, but he was calling him and he, he didn't quite understand that there're poles in the street.
Yeah.
And when we got done, he had effectively not addressed what to do with the poles. He indicated again, SESD, you serve the county residence, Payson, you can serve the depot and that's kind of where he left it, but the poles are still on the other side of the street that lines going across, servicing five homes over there and.
What would that cost us to move that?
I, I don't know. I don't know about what it's going to.
What'll happen?
The overhead is fairly cheap, but the problem I have with putting that in underground, when that does annex, where is the curb going to be? Where's the sidewalk? If it can be put in the right place, the right elevation? So, you put all that money into underground and it may all be tore up and be done again. So, if you put it in the overhead, it's, it's a cheaper solution. About 600 bucks a pole and then, but all the transformers, everything should be able to be shifted over and reused and so it's, it's not that, that expensive to put it overhead, but underground, it just causes me a little bit of grief because it's going to be in the wrong.
Without any design.
But they already told us they wouldn't let us move them, right?
Not over Kent, but we can put it underground.
We, we approached on two or three different times and one of the responses back was that, yeah, we'll, we'll let you go ahead and do this, but, but we'll serve the depot. And that's exactly what the judge said, you know, and resolve. And so, the options that they presented back to us were not, were not feasible.
I, I hope that through the email chain, the attorneys can see that we did try to work it out. The last comment I had from, from Dan was, Dave, why do you keep sending me these emails? You know what our attorneys are dealing with this? And I just said, no, our attorneys are not dealing with this, we're trying to work it out with you. We'll just leave them in the road and tell them to let the court decide. So, it may come to court sooner or later, but this agreement is just to. So it may come to court sooner or later, but this agreement is just to, so that the contractor can move forward, get occupancy, because normally you have to have the road paved and everything done before you get occupancy, and so we're saying we'll give you occupancy.
With the durable.
Hold you up and, and you can move forward with your development. And then if we get this solved, there's just a small amount that's not paved and we can just patch that and get it done and, and then we can move forward. Right now we'll have to pave and then, uh, put some barriers so that, so that it keeps it safe for the vehicles.
It does look really funny for both.
Yeah, it's, it's not the best.
Oh, like, right, and it just looks funny when I drive by every day.
We agree, it's not the best situation, um, we really think they could, the wire underneath the road and put their meters on and they could, they could serve that. They could, it, it would be very low cost.
Well, to me, wouldn't you just take it under the road and then put the poles up? Isn't that what you would do?
That's all done.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's. Before we were stopped, we had a verbal agreement with S E S D that we would take and serve those five homes and the depot. And so we had, we being the city, had al- already put our lines in underground to serve the depot and, um, ladder rolls in that underground to serve across over to the, um, to, to the five county homes as what we thought S E S D had read up through their management. But then lawsuit came and, um, management was not in town and that's when the hearing happened and, um, it, it came out like it is.
So we just need to approve to give the mayor the authority to make these changes?
You just need to adopt the resolution that adopts this amendment that, okay, that we can just move forward.
Are we ready for a motion pro temp?
Okay, there's no more discussion, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion, we, uh, adopt resolution number zero nine zero five two zero one eight, resolution authorizing the mayor on behalf of Payson City to execute the First Amendment to Development Agreement, amending certain provisions of the Development Agreement for the apartment at the depot.
Okay, this motion requires a roll call, sort of the council.
Aye.
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 Motion passes. Thank you. Uh, last, uh, discussion regarding amendments for small cell towers and wireless communications.
I wanted to introduce the council with concepts so that they knew what was coming down the line. Federal government, um, eighteen months ago passed, um, or even longer, uh, passed a, um, statute on their level indicating that small cell, um, is something that can come into the communities and indicated that, um, we would follow the federal statute, which, um, uh, our state chose not to do, uh, last legislative session, um, Representative, uh, Bramble, passed the small cell, um, legislation and governs small cells. Small cells are a concept, the, the cell towers you, you see now are actually independent cell towers or attached to structures and they're usually very tall and they broadcast miles. Small tel-, small cell, and I just got some random, um, photos of, that I'll show you. Small cells are designed to go on existing poles or poles that, that they put into the public, um, utility right of way. This would service a neighborhood as opposed to several miles or a long freeway. And so you would have maybe, um, if you have, um, several, um, neighborhoods in that, you can see several of these throughout the community. As we, we look at the federal legislation and at the state legislation and will adopt the same type of definitions, utility poles are what you might think they are, except what is accepted out of the state is anything that would be our municipal power poles. Any type of power pole that is, um, just, uh, either distributing or transmitting, um, electrical power through the community are by definition not utility poles. Um, there are poles that we do own that aren't necessarily in that category. So downtown, um, we have the decorative lights, um, it does address that we, we can ask anybody that wants to attach to those, that they attach in a manner that preserves the decorative nature of it. But, um, you're looking at these, these type of structures, our state legislation indicates that they're twelve by, um, the, what they call the antenna, and this up here is the antenna, um, antennas. Antennas will change, um, this is probably the antenna on this one with the, um, fixtures down below, um, on the pole and.
That looks pretty decorative.
And these, these are ground units that may serve several small cell, but these type of units come in and they're on the ground and they also have dimensions that the state, um, has prescribed. This is just to give you an idea, the ours are theoretically a little smaller than this, but they still have to have some type of a unit on the ground and then those units below the antennas, and the antennas are similar in size, well, they're similar in, they're, they're smaller, but they look like the array of antennas that you see on the cell tower. They're flat, they have, uh, several of them around that type of thing.
So is this something that, that cell companies have to have our approvals to do, or did the government just give them permission to hang them on our poles?
We, that.
And our state said no.
Um, no, our state says that, that we can govern, or if we don't choose to govern, then state law governs. And, uh, and that's what, um, I put in the packet, a draft of what we might be able to, um, turn into our own legislation in.
So we have to allow them?
We, we have to allow them into our community and it's tough to think about, but I mean, I'll bet that we have fifteen cell phones in this room.
Probably.
And, you know, our, our, our nature in Texas is data and, and technical devices and it's really to our benefit. I say that.
But it's forced to, but we're to accept their.
Forced to accept them, but, but we also have a, an opportunity to, to govern them somewhat. And we've got a, a real benefit in that all, all of our electrical power poles are, are exempted out. And so, um, even though you have some downtown or on other lights, um, for example, going on Main Street, um, there are lights all the way along. There may be one every three, to five poles or something like that, um, I don't know the distances and that, but, uh, yeah. We're being forced to allow these into our community. The answer, the area, more difficult it is to broadcast into those, those areas from the regular cell towers. And so this is the technology that has come about.
So is this just on existing poles that are not power poles, will they do it, or can they come in and put a pole in?
They can apply to put a pole in, similar to Comcast, Comcast can apply, come in and put in a pole, they do, they do cable and, and these also have cables involved in that, but yes, they can, they can apply, they would rather attach to ours or whosever's, you know, out there, but these are some of the examples of what they look like.
Don't we have enough cell towers around us?
On the defense of that, my cell phone does not work at my home because I am directly between two of them and I live in a hole. This is the best news I've heard in a long time.
That's what I wondered, is do you have to have so many cell towers in your area?
Um, and not only that, service providers. I don't know who your service provider is, but it may not be the same one I have, and if, if my service provider isn't working and yours is, mine might roam and cost me more, those type of things, it's the market. But yes, this will have.
Kind of chance, it's a government regulated market.
But is there a way to find that out, how many cell towers we have to have per?
I, I mean, would.
It would be, yeah, the commerce would, would indicate, um, what our market right now would, would need. But the more growth we have, the more towers we'd need and so, and damn city and things like that. And I don't, I don't know that science, so I can't really answer.
Pay rent though if they use?
Um, the ordinance does allow for what's called a franchise, to allow them into our right of ways. And to do that, there are franchise fees and if they attach, if we actually allow them to attach to, um, our utility poles or other poles, we can charge a, um.
Pull attachment.
Yeah, that's a pull attachment agreement, we, and we do that with, with cable TV, with, um, Utopia, they have the franchise, they pay us, um, uh, pull attachment fees, um, on an ongoing basis. So yes, it's, it is a revenue generating.
Why don't I have a comment with that, as long as we have the right to say, this one's okay and this one's not or?
I don't want, no, I'm.
Um, and it, it, that depends.
Like, so we've got all these big, beautiful decorative poles that we put in down by the park, for example, let's say if we did that and now we have to go and cheapen them because we're forced to, I mean, that seems like a private sector business that they should go out and buy their spot and put their pole in.
We can, we can.
Like, it comes in and subsidizes my business and says, oh, hey, Welton needs more, a store to sell his product at, we're going to force him to set up shop in Payson City Council Room so he can sell his product.
Yeah, one of the definitions, um, I, I can't tell you that we can prevent them from not turning.
Well, we need them, I, I'm not, you need to understand, I understand that we need them.
But, um, they, both on the federal level and on the local level, I, I'd say, and, and hopefully we do, differentiate among the poles that we have, we've got light poles that go from the, um, I fifteen to, to, um, first, uh, north and those are, are regular light poles. Then from first north to what, third, up past the park are these, um, Camel Albert type decorative. Um, the example that I've given and also, um, the state, um, law indicates, uh, de, it gives a definition for decorative pole and it's especially, uh, specially designed and placed for aesthetic purposes on which a nondiscriminatory rule or code prohibits a, um, a pertinence or an attachment other than a small wireless facility, so, you know, they're, it's, they're allowing themselves, not themselves, the state has allowed them to come on those type of poles, but then they have to have a specialty design to blend in. It can't, I mean, we can ask them not to look like this type of scenario. And it goes down through the state, uh, one allows for, um, certain, um, design criteria and things like that for us to, to develop as we, it relates to our, our poles. They also have, um, concerns into consideration for, um, historical distance and so we can also deal with that. We have a large historical district, downtown is, is not, um, just a historical district, that's within it, but we have several, um, several blocks, our historical district, that, that will be addressed or we can address as we walk with that. That's, that's another definition that's in there, that's why, that's why I'm bringing it to your attention because it is quite an involved technology that's coming our direction. We have had phone calls, um, for probably eighteen months from, from, um, those who want to come and to do a broker, um, for your big company, companies and things like that, uh, decisions on poles. We can, uh, govern to where that if they want to get a permit, they absolutely have to build, they have to build. They can't get the permit and sell that to someone else. Those are things that we can govern, um, in our own community. So we know who, the, the person or the entity that's coming is actually the entity that will be building out and, and, uh, we're working with them face to face. After, since, since, um, my place is in Thursday, last week, week. The National League of Cities and Towns has issued a model ordinance, have, I got it yesterday, so I haven't read through it. And Comcast has read through it, they, by email suggested, um, one addition that comes out of the state code for micro, instead, instead of small cell, it's called Michael, micro. Uh, micro cells, it's a different, I think it's a different technology, but in the same category. And, and they also asked that we not require a permit for maintenance and, um, not upgrade, but just if, if they upgrade and increase the size, they have to come in for a permit, but they had, um, they've worked out language that works for both cities and them, uh, for maintenance of things that are already in, and they asked, uh, by email, if we'd add that into our. So I imagine between now and our next, um, meeting, we'll have other suggestions of things like that coming from, from Comcast or, um, Sprint or Verizon or anyone else.
I think they're just coming, I know a little bit about this because my son-in-law works for a big company that does the cell towers. And I think what they're trying to get away from is the regulation on it because there's quite a bit of regulation on the cell towers and I think there should be, so these people that, that do this kind of stuff, like, they're, they're professionals, they know what needs to be done where you get other people just coming in, you don't know if you're going to get what it is that you really want. And so it's just like when they have to, when, when they want to go bigger, um, you have the people that know what they're doing to make that bigger and you look at a cell tower, it doesn't look like that, I mean, the cell towers that are out there, they're not really ugly. I mean, these are ugly.
Yeah, we're used to them and, and they're out there and they're quite tall.
They're quite tall and they're like far away.
The tree looks better than that.
Well, they've had some.
If they treat it, it doesn't actually admire them or better than that.
But they've done that, you know.
Oh, I know, what I'm saying, the way it is is.
Oh, yeah, this, this is not.
Like, I don't, I don't understand what's.
The, now, this is an extreme example that I'm about to show you, so don't, it truly is an extreme example, but it's fine we want to regulate. This is what they said, you know, you need to regulate because you don't want to have colocation to the type of situation where you've got all of the different manufact-, not manufacturers, but, um, service providers trying to co-locate in one location like that. So those are, that's, that's a reason for it, also.
They kind of do that anyway, but we don't have to see it, like, they keep it far away so we don't have to see it.
And, and a lot of, a lot of the, um, cell.
Tagged already.
Uh, community uses, um, each other's services by contract, they contract that their, their, um, signal could go through the, you know, this horizon, their, their signal through the spring tower, you know, uh, different technology, but they can utilize those type of, uh, and they do, they utilize those type of contracts, but this is truly a different technology to penetrate density more, um, because of high dense metropolitan areas like, if you, if you think of New York, you know, everything at ground level, you know, thirty feet away is concrete and no matter how you, how you go or where you go, it's, it's not friendly and so they have to.
So maybe we need to put that into our master planning.
But these are, you know, our community won't have that type of a density issue, but, um, one of the issues that they had indicated is that once they're in, you need to make sure, and, and our proposal ordinance does control any expansion. Is, uh, the caption to this picture before I moved across said, um, this is expansion. It began with what's, what was behind the, this area and here, and then it's a built more small cells. They connected to this location, but they haven't built out and, and those are things that we can protect. have to build out. And those are things that we can protect against. And that's, that's why I wanted to introduce it, so that you can be thinking about those type of things. So as we bring this forward, and I will review the National League of Cities and Towns model ordinance that they proposed, because they really do focus in on and hone in on the issues of communities. I mean, that's what they're about.
Mark, I have one quick question.
Sure.
Can we require them to put it on our poles? Because I'd just soon have them on our poles and charge everybody that, so we can, instead of having their own where they don't have to pay anybody or pay somebody else, if we're paying everyone, they're paying us. I'd just soon have them pay us.
Yes.
They need to put their pole on our property though.
We probably can't tell them that they can only put them on our poles. So we can't do it exclusively. But yes, we can, even though it's defined as our power poles, now, I don't know technology, so I don't know whether, I'll have talked to Ron about this, whether it interferes with power poles. But if we choose to allow that, yeah, we might be able to allow them on our poles that already exist out here, as opposed to the Comcast pole or Sprint or whatever's out there.
And there's an optimist inside that there is a. The power they're second, they're paying for it.
Yeah, they have to be powered. And so, there's more than just what is visual, because they have to have access to power and things like that. It's like any other utility or, like a cell tower, you have to power that cell tower. And at the bottom of the cell tower is a large utility box that houses the equipment. Anyway, I, that was the introduction that I wanted to bring to you so that you knew what we're talking about, what the laws have evolved to. And I'll look to go through these new suggestions and bring it back to you.
Thank you. Thank you. Motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn. I'll stick with that.